All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Fruta City Council meeting. They're on. Can hear them. Again, welcome, everybody. Glad to see a full house tonight here. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Breaman.
Here.
Counsel Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Here.
Counsel Miller.
Present.
Counsel Hancy.
Here.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance if you'd all stand with us. Like to take the opportunity to allow a moment of silence for all faiths and beliefs, the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
It was adorable.
Stop, guys.
Who was that? It was so cute.
All right.
Entry delegate every.
That sounded really good. So with that, we're going to move into our agenda. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved. Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments related to that? All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counsel Breaman.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Present.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. So we've got four items tonight, and our first one is a presentation for the Fruta Teacher Student of the Month, and it's for Shellity Elementary. So with that, I'm going to come down front because it's a little easier. We've got a certificate for those nominated, and we leave it up to the principal on how they pick who's nominated from each school.
Sure.
So we've got a certificate, we've got a day pass to the rec center, and then we've got I heart Fruta pin for each recipient. All right, so this is one of the fun parts of our job. So that's why the house is so full tonight. I know one of the reasons. So we're glad to see everybody here. So we've got three teachers, and then we've got the six students that we're going to recognize. So we'd like to ask when we call your name that you guys would come on up and that you'd stay up here because I think there's probably some parents that would like to get some photos during this time. So with that, the first one that I'm going to call is Molly Evans, and it's the school psychologist at Shellity. So come on up. We've got, and I got to make sure I say names right. If I don't, let me know. Sandy Menke, is that correct? He's a special education teacher. Next is the music teacher, Jamie Lewis. All right, and then we're going to move into our kids. So the first one is for fifth grade. It's Scout Greener. For fourth grade, we've got Ryan Meyer. It may have to slide down a little bit to give us room. All right, third grade, we've got Landon Mossbarger. Second grade, Grayson Gastinot. For first grade, Eloise Jones. And for kindergarten, we've got Avila England. Let's give him another round of applause, and then if you want to stay up here for photos. All right, one more round of applause. Congratulations, everyone. All right, with that, we're going to move into our, we've got three proclamations tonight. And so our next proclamation is for Veterans Day for the city of Fruta, and I've asked James to read this one for us. Once he does that, we'll ask Lou Brackett, who's on here on behalf of the American Legion, to come up and say a few words.
Be putting it up there.
She is. She's going to. We got to read it first. You're getting ahead of yourself, Lou.
All right. Whereas honorable service performed in the defense of our nation and her cause in time of war is the highest form of citizenship. And whereas the men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States of America have made major contributions towards the preservation of the freedom of this nation and her people. And whereas the services performed by these millions of gallant Americans have demonstrated the willingness of our nation to meet the challenges of those wishing to subjugate individual determination through armed conflict. And whereas the nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contribution of American veterans, men and women to the advancement of the cause of an honorable world peace. And whereas for many, that sacrifice has ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all the oppressed persons of the world. And now therefore, the city of Fruta City Council calls upon all citizens to observe Saturday, November 11, 2023, with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy.
All right, Lou, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I want to express my appreciation on behalf of, and staff, on behalf of all the veterans in our community and our state and our nation and for their sacrifices. And I would like to again encourage your participation in the veterans events that will be coming up this week. Ie, there's a parade in Grand Junction at two o'clock featuring veterans for various services. Also, there's a ceremony at the Vietnam War Memorial Friday at 11 o'clock. We'd also like to invite all citizens and community members and veterans, non-veterans alike, to attend and participate. Once again, I want to thank you and recognition of all of the veterans who, and service members, who are currently serving and who have served our country admirably and honorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Lou, don't run away yet. They want to get a photo op.
Thank you, Lou.
All right, our next proclamation is proclaiming Interfaith Awareness Week, and I've asked Matthew to read this. After he gets done reading, we'll ask the former chair, Reverend Dr. Carla Ryan, to come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation of November 15th to 21st, 2023 as the sixth annual Interfaith Awareness Week. Whereas the city of Fruta honors and respects all religious beliefs, cultures, creeds, and races, and is recognized as an inclusive city, defined in the November 20th, 2018 Original Inclusivity Proclamation, and seeks to learn from those who believe that equal spiritual opportunity and human rights belong to every citizen. And whereas various statistical sources calculate there are between 4,000 and 5,000 different religions in the world, and that the city of Fruta and Mesa County are home to a number of such different faith paths, along with individuals who do not have a religious practice, and whereas freedom of religion or belief is recognized internationally as a human right, and observance like Interfaith Awareness Week seek to promote and support that right for all individuals. And whereas the Grand Valley Interfaith Network Given has been networking together since 1977 and offers varied programs designed to bring diverse faith groups into dialogue to better practice peace, harmony, cooperation, and understanding among all people. And whereas the annual Thanksgiving Community Interfaith Service on November 21st, which is the capstone of Interfaith Awareness Week, demonstrates that diverse religious perspectives are committed to learning and loving. And whereas the ongoing activity of harmony among a diversity of faiths is vital goal for all people throughout Fruta, North America, and the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council for the city of Fruta, on behalf of the citizens of Fruta, proclaim November 15th to the 21st, 2023 as the Interfaith Awareness Week in the city of Fruta. Furthermore, the city of Fruta hereby intends to continue annually recognize the importance of all beliefs in the community and to consider respect and value the uniqueness and importance of religious diversity in our community.
Thank you very much. My name's Carleen Goldwight. I am the past Vice President, and I'm joined by Reverend Dr. Carla Ryan, who is our current webmaster and past president of Given. What a great group to be with tonight. I mean, my gosh, those kids and the veterans, we're just honored to be here. And I'd like to first take a moment and acknowledge our collective privilege of being able to live, work, and play in this beautiful place, the ancestral lands of the Wimeneeshu people who were forcibly removed from this place. Acknowledging this challenging history is a critical step to addressing past harms and moving forward in community. In much the same spirit, Interfaith Awareness Week reminds us that religious history, while full of benevolence and goodness, is also fraught with conflict and conquest. With this proclamation, the city of Fruta affirms its commitment to honoring freedom of religion or belief and to welcoming people of all and no faith practices. We've all heard stories, seen images, or perhaps been personally impacted by religious-based intimidation or violence. As a practitioner of Christianity myself, and this is speaking for me and not on behalf of Given, I cannot pretend away the dehumanizing aspects of my religion's history. What I can do is accept a special responsibility to ensure that other faiths have equitable access in the public square. It's so easy to forget how entrenched some aspects of my religion are. For example, we typically celebrate a week from a Sunday to a Saturday. That's kind of a reflection of my religious practices over the many years. So for Interfaith Awareness Week, knowing that many faith practices don't have a set week, we selected Wednesday, the 15th through Tuesday, the 21st as our religious, as our Interfaith Awareness Week. Almost done. Although religious conflict is what makes the news, organizations like Given remind us that many religions share similar values or beliefs. This year, we elected to focus on a couple of those shared values, loving and learning. One of our original Interfaith Awareness Week traditions springs out of love. We encourage everybody to donate blood soon and on a regular basis. How amazing is it that one small act like that can save the life of a person you'll never know? We'll wrap up Interfaith Awareness Week with our learning portion through the annual Interfaith gathering we call Thanksgiving. Will be hosted by the Episcopal Church on the Redlands on Tuesday, November 21st, and livestreamed. Check Given's website for more information. I'd like to close, those of you out there saying, "Thank God", with something that I found just a couple of days ago that's attributed to Arthur C. Clarke. Most of us probably know him best as the author of the novel 2001: A Space Odyssey. I quote, "In my life, I've found two things of priceless worth, learning and loving. Nothing else, not fame, not power, not achievement for its own sake, can possibly have the same lasting value. For when your life is over, if you can say, 'I have learned and I have loved', you will also be able to say, 'I have been happy.' Thank you again for supporting Interfaith Awareness Week."
All right, and our next proclamation is honoring the King family and their sunflower farm, and I've asked Amy to read this one for us.
So this one's extra special to me because when I was elected to council, I discovered that we get to bring some of these proclamations if we find something that we want to honor, that we want to recognize. And this is my first that I got to bring to council, so you'll have to forgive me if I get a little emotional. And I'm only going to do one whereas for this one, so you don't have to hear whereas over and over again. This proclamation is honoring the King family and their sunflower farm. Whereas Fruta's agricultural roots run deep and strong with family farms at its core. Multiple crops have greased our fields, corn, wheat, alfalfa, and so many more. And these farms bring food to our tables, feed our animal friends, and bring beauty, green space, and charm. The families who run them are hardworking folks, their smiles and hearts open and warm. And Fruta's values of kindness and neighborly acts are evident every day. The King family stepped up and displayed these great things in a big and most beautiful way. The sunflowers they planted came up strong and true, their bright blooms turning each day to the sun. The King family decided to open their fields to share these flowers with everyone. The word quickly spread, and the community came with their families and cameras in tow. Beautiful photos popped up each and every day they wanted the whole town to know. And the city of Fruta quickly learned of the wondrous joy being spread by this family farm. We want to recognize and show appreciation for this act so thoughtful, kind, and warm. Now therefore, let it be known with this token of ours, a symbol of Fruta so true, we honor and cherish this kindness you've shared. Tonight, we celebrate you.
Please bring your whole family.
If you guys want to say anything, you have the opportunity if you want to.
Yeah.
Come on up. We've got, we've got a special fruit of gear for you.
And this one's extra special. I thought it needed a little bit of commemorating for the reason you're getting it. So you should hang that proudly, and then that's the proclamation for you to take. Yeah. Thank you all so much for doing that. Yeah. Would it be okay if we get a photo with your family?
Sure.
Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
You're right. Proclamation.
I don't want that responsibility.
Congratulations.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the Fruta City Council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Now will be your only opportunity if there's something that you'd like to say. All right, hearing none, we're going to close the public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They'll all be approved by a single motion. So with that, we're going to open up the consent agenda. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we'll close the consent agenda to public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any item on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments related to these? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hancy.
Yes.
Counsel Breaman.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, then we'd also like to, we had one board and commission reappointment for Jim Jackson. I don't know if he's here tonight or not. I didn't see him. But we just want to acknowledge that members that apply to our boards and commissions, they really help our council in making wise decisions for our community. And so it's great when we get to appoint or reappoint somebody to our board. So we reappointed him to our police commission. So it's just great to have our community involved in our decision-making. So with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. And so we've got one quasi judicial hearing tonight. And so with the quasi judicial hearing, we do a staff presentation. Then we allow the applicant to speak, and then we'll open it up to the public for public comment. And what we ask is that the public comment would limit their comments to three minutes. And once all the public has had the opportunity to speak, we close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and comments. We also ask that during public comment time, that there's no cheering or clapping. We're here to hear both sides of these applications, and so we want to be respectful for everybody that is here and speaking tonight. So with that, we're going to move into our ordinance 2023-13, our second reading. In its ordinance, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 131 acres of property located south of Snooks Bottom and west of the intersection of Kingsview Road and Highway 340 to a planned unit development zone and approval of a preliminary PUD plan, Sunset Point PUD. And so we've got our city planner here, Henry Hempel, to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd be with you here tonight. There's a few things that I want to mention before I get started. We, just like the planning commission meeting, we printed out a number of site plans for the public to take. They're over there on the corner of that table. There was a lot of people in here to start the meeting, so waited until then. So if anybody from the public wants a printout of the site plan, I believe there's, there's 20 or so. If there's not enough, just share those, please. The other thing I'd like to enter into the record is we did receive some public, written public comments dated today. They are similar and from the same property owner as what's in your packet. There's a few word changes, but just for the record, I'm going to hand these out to you, and then I'll get started on my presentation. All right, wonderful. So like the mayor mentioned, reading the agenda, this is a second reading of an ordinance to adopt land use authority over a number of acres, 132 total. And the second part of the presentation, and why I mention this is important, is they're twofold. They essentially kind of are tied together, the planning of development zone application with the preliminary PUD plan. We wouldn't have one without the other, and so we're going to combine those application and the presentation into one. We'll briefly go over the criteria. You've had time to consider the criteria in your, in the staff report in the packet. But to, why this is important is they are separate decisions. And so there's separate dialogue that happens. We'd like to make mention that the first part of the presentation or the dialogue that the council will have is related to the zoning ordinance, the second reading of ordinance 2023-13. But why it's important is because the, the site plan or the preliminary plan that we had to review does go hand in hand with the exhibit that's tied to the ordinance that refines the zoning. But I'll clarify that in a minute. So the PUD process in our code is laid out in three different steps. The first step is a concept plan. This is optional. The second step, which is required, is the preliminary PUD plan, which is why we're here tonight. And then following tonight, if approved, our code says that the final PUD plan is reviewed administratively. Right now, we're here at the, essentially the first required step, which is to take a preliminary PUD plan before the city council, after it's gone to the planning commission, and adequate legal notice has been done. And then part of the PUD, the preliminary PUD plan is adoption of a zoning ordinance, which is why that is before you tonight as well. So planning at developments, our code reads, "The purpose of this chapter is to encourage flexibility and innovation in developments in exchange for a community benefit that could not otherwise be realized through the strict adherence of the code." Touch on legal notice. This has all been accomplished in accordance with Section 17.07.040E. Legal notice is required at least 15 days prior to the planning commission meeting. That was all accomplished before we did have that meeting on October 10th. That is comprised of essentially three elements to try to reach any concerned citizens that might be interested in this application, a local newspaper posting, a site posting with the blue signs out there, and then legal notice postcards. I've attached a clip of the legal notice buffer zone. Everything highlighted in that turquoise color received a legal notice postcard. So we felt like it was strong to send it to everyone that lives in Kingsview Estates because obviously this project does affect all those that live in there. This is application, land development application 2023-27. Sunshine of Delta is the property owner, and it's located on a number of different parcels near Snooks Bottom and Kingsview Estates. So here's the subject area highlighted in the dark black. It's comprised of 132 total acres, but the 122 total dwelling units are clustered for a conservation of open space and preservation of open space over 54 total acres. So the whole PUD is 132 acres that we're talking about tonight. The residential development is essentially clustered over 54 acres, which is about 41% of the total site. The remaining site would be, is allowed for the open space and roadways. So how we got here tonight, there's quite a bit of history in this, so I'm not going to indulge too much into it, but essentially the development, the preliminary development plan was originally taken through a county process. It encompassed 260 total acres and is comprised of an overall density of one dwelling unit per acre under those county standards. Now, if we fast forward a little, how Fruta gets involved. Now, if we fast forward a little, how Fruta gets involved, Fruta needed to annex the property and place it in a zone due to some failing wastewater, some private wastewater treatment plant that was constructed in accordance with the overall development plan for all of the filings. And so over a number of years, the city of Fruta used every effort possible to try to extend sewer without costing the taxpayers extra money. We received grants, and we used, we saved up in the general fund over a number of years, and finally was able to get that accomplished, although we were including a county subdivision into the city. When that happened, we adopted as an annexation agreement that essentially stated that we were acknowledging the preliminary development plan that was proposed as a public hearing, and that we were going to need to take any future land use application before an elected body or a decision-making body, and that any strict adherence to the code could be exercised through our land use code. But it was observed that we were essentially inheriting a PD zone through the annexation and the zoning process. So wanted to, not talking with folks back in the seventies or the nineties when it was originally zoned or annexed, we come to the assumption that, you know, through the documents and the history of the file that's fairly large, that those agreements that were in place were for how we got here tonight. So again, like I mentioned, one hundred and twenty-two total acres, and the city of Fruta has inherited somewhat of a planned unit development zone for this subject property. And the residential development, again, is clustered over fifty-four acres or forty-one percent of the site, and sixty-four acres are preserved as open space. I should mention that the one hundred and twenty-two acres, that should be dwelling units, it's one hundred and thirty-two acres. But again, you guys have seen the filing plan, and hopefully the public has happened, had an opportunity to review it. The, the primary access from this comes from Kingsview Road off of Highway three forty and is located near the intersection of the Snooks Bottom intersection as you, as you turn off there. The overall site plan proposes an emergency access, utility easement, and pedestrian access through the disc golf course that's along the floodplain area by the river that connects towards the lift station that the city currently has that serves the entire Kingsview area with sanitary sewer service. The application and all the dwelling units will feed through that lift station. And it's important to mention that the lift station is sized adequately enough. It is a review criteria in here is to ensure that wastewater can be handled appropriately. That lift station is our, is working at under ten percent capacity. It's a fairly old lift station, so regardless of this development, we're still slated to replace it or make some improvements to it. So regardless of this application, we will be making some modifications to that and upgrading that lift station. As far as, as traffic is concerned, the application did submit somewhat of a, an outdated traffic study back from like two thousand and seven timeframe. The recommendations in that for turn lanes on Highway three forty going north and southbound, those have been installed to left-hand turn and right-hand turn in. Those ones have been installed to get onto Kingsview on Highway three forty. But it is important to note that, yes, the traffic will be increased for this subdivision when this application is built out at its total capacity, which is the one hundred and twenty-two dwelling units. So some of the deviations that are proposed, planning developments do have kind of that flexibility component to them. It proposes a six-foot detached sidewalk along only one of the major roads, and all other roads will have just curb gutters and sidewalks, similar to what Kingsview has. It's, it's, there's no sidewalks in Kingsview. And so we're trying to kind of mesh the two subdivision, the subdivision that's currently there, and then our, our criteria into those. The city does require, you know, sidewalks on both sides. These roadways, the major roadways, you know, it's staff's recommendation that these will be frequent pedestrian paths and so that they should accommodate the sidewalks on those sides. Five-year, five-yard, or five-foot rear yard setback on lots that back up to the open space. Fifteen-foot rear yard setback for all other lots. This is what's being proposed. And the reason we use the monument preservation zone as kind of an underlying zone is that's what we use to base our metrics on. What are you deviating from as our land use code goes? And that's what the master plan would have it as if they were saying, hey, we just want to do this. So that's why we, we use that as a kind of a basis to make decisions or recommendations to the planning commission and the council. So that's, that's what's used in the monument preservation, but zone recommends twenty-foot. So it's not that much deviation, but it's supported by staff with what they have proposed. Eight-foot side yard setback, the monument preservation zone requires a fifty-foot setback, but the eight-foot setback is very consistent with a community residential zone, which is sixteen-foot total on both sides when you add them up. So eight and eight is pretty common, or five and eleven is another common one. But eight-foot is the requirement there. And then the application proposes one dwelling unit per acre, which is consistent with the overall development plan like I discussed before, that was essentially agreed and inherited through the annexation and the zoning petition to keep consistent with what Kingsview already had going. So to review the zoning criteria that pertain to the ordinance in its entirety is referenced in seventeen oh nine oh seven oh. And the two that are highlighted in the bold black are the proposed rezone is compatible with surrounding land uses pursuant to that section, the compatibility, and is consistent with the city's goals, policies, and comprehensive plan. So this, we feel that the proposed planning to development is consistent with the surrounding area. You see open spaces as a really large component of the subdivision that's set aside as the overall development plan goes out and is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So this is something that we would see regardless of this planning and development, and it's something that you would see in a straight zone or a standard zone subdivision. And then the other one, not all five have to be met. There's and/or statements after. So number three, the area for which the rezone is requested has changed substantially. Obviously, the original planning at development or the subdivision was proposed in the seventies with its own wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, things have changed in this area, and given the fact that there is some site restraints or constraints with the geography and the topography of the site, this planning and development makes sense for flexibility to meet the needs of this area that obviously has development rights already to it. Then as we move on from the zoning requirements, which you guys will have discussion on after I conclude, is the planning and development and the code requirements related to the subdivision. And I think that's where we need to focus is, you know, that there are many criteria contained in our land use code pertaining to planning developments. There's a reason that why there's so many. We need to really take, take high consideration of what's being proposed to us. And we feel that the application does meet the planning and development standards and just the subdivision standards alone. They somewhat mesh together, they overlap. And so there's some things in there like meeting the comprehensive plan. We absolutely feel that this does meet our comprehensive plan. We've planned for services extending to this area and having residential development right next to the Kingsview and along the river. Open space preservation, this is apparent in their consolidation of their lots with the open space and then clustering the lots so that the open space can be preserved so that the city of Fruta and the public can take advantage of those areas that are so valuable. Then flexibility, this is needed to, in order to make some conceded efforts to develop the land in general. And the surrounding character, we feel that the application and what's been proposed, there's a lot of consideration for what's currently there. And taking into consideration also the traffic and the existing subdivision that's existed there with what could be perceived as a large amounts of open space in their backyard. Not, not taking away from the BLM, but also, you know, this large landholding of private property, you know, has been very valuable to those that live there and citizens of Fruta for quite some time. And then subdivisions, like I said, they, they overlap a preservation of natural features, compatibility, our comprehensive plan, and the ability to resolve recommendations from reviewers. So in the packet, there was, CDOT requested that they get another traffic study. And that's supported by the planning commission, and we agree that is part of the review comments. And so staff recommendation that they respond to the review comments adequately with the final plan does include that aspect of it, that a new traffic study, and then what recommendations those make. The planning commission did send those on and said, whatever those recommendations say, like, we want them to do those things. And so I think we heard that loud and clear from the planning commission. Like I mentioned before, review agency comments, these can be adequately resolved, we feel, without a significant redesign. But no major concerns from UTE Water, Lower Valley Fire Department, CDOT, or Excel Energy. All review comments received are included with the staff report in the packet, and they must be adequately resolved with the final plat application. Public comments have been received, and like I mentioned before, they are all included in your packet. And prior to my presentation, we handed out some comments that we received today via email. The planning commission voted on this, so they had a public hearing on October tenth and recommended approval by a vote of six to one. The conditions of approval are a new traffic study recommendations be met, access road be built out of the floodplain area, and that is the access road, the, it's an emergency access road. It doubles as a pedestrian access and a utility easement. Right now, there's already a utility easement in place there. They would just be placing utilities in there finally. And the planning commission discussed that they'd like to have that kind of lifted out of the hundred-year floodplain, if I remember correctly. And we feel like that can be done without really a significant redesign. Another recommendation was sidewalk from Highway three forty up to the Snooks Bottom intersection along, I believe it was the, that would be the north side of Kingsview Road to get pedestrians up and down there. There is a bus stop at the very bottom of Kingsview and Highway three forty that was brought up in the planning commission meeting, and I think that was the impetus for the planning commission making that recommendation. And then for the emergency access, there were some concerns that only the new subdivision would be allowed to have the keys to lockable ballards for emergency access. And so there were some concerns that Kingsview Estates, they wanted to also be involved in any lockable ballards that may be installed with the emergency access and pedestrian access way that the Kingsview Estates Homeowners Association also have access to those. And so those were the recommendations from the planning commission voted approval six to one. And then the staff recommendation is included in the packet. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and then we can get into kind of next steps once we get to that point. Thank you.
All right, and then we're going to turn over the applicant. This is John Moyer. You're here to present.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is John Moyer. I live at two seven eight North Mesa Street here in Fruta, Colorado. I think Henry presented quite well, gave you most of the details. I looked over the packet that you guys get, and that's, that is a lot of paperwork. I don't envy you before each meeting having to go through the amount of paperwork that you receive. We did host a neighborhood meeting at which we had quite a few of the, of the neighbors from Kingsview who showed up. I thought it was a good interface meeting with them. I think many of their concerns were reiterated at Planning Commission, and I think you'll hear them probably again this evening. I don't take those lightly. I think that probably the biggest concern that I would share with them is the safety of the intersection with Highway three forty and Kingsview Road. We've, we've agreed that once we get through this process, if we get through this process, we'll bring on a new traffic study and see what that traffic study brings to light. I really don't know what it's going to say. Traffic studies are an interesting little operation, so, but I would, I would imagine one of the things that we've already committed to do is to improve the alignment of that intersection. Those of you who know Kingsview, and I'm imagining all of you do, realize that there's a pretty substantial vertical drop that takes place from the intersection down till you get up to Fowler Drive. There's a considerable drop in elevation, and then it comes back up. And then the alignment of Kingsview Road is pretty curvy through there. And so one of the things that we looked at, this is the third time we present this, by the way, to the city council, the first time being back in two thousand and six. But at that point in time, we, we were considering and had provided a design to straighten out that road and some of the verticality of it by lifting the road and increasing the size of the culvert. So that, I know, is a major concern and certainly something that we haven't taken lightly. I believe that, that we took into consideration the location when we did the design of this plan. We clustered the homes. We, we kind of followed the contours, and we provided a substantial amount of open space with, with a trail network that takes it all the way from Kingsview Road, actually, from Highway three forty down by the lift station up to Kingsview Road, and then from Kingsview Road all the way up to the BLM trailhead. So I think it's a, it's a nice additional trail to the city of Fruta. And obviously, it's a benefit to the residents who would live here at Sunset Point. We, you know, one of the things that I discussed with, with the city, and it'll come up eventually, is whether we can implement a gray water system. Those have been approved by the state of Colorado, but they have to be monitored by the city. And, and so there's a little bit of a, of a situation there. And I've, I've talked to the, to the planning and development folks and with the engineering, and maybe it's something that we can get accomplished. I think it would be a good idea. This area has no irrigation water, and if designed appropriately, this would provide, I think, a benefit to those residents as well. And apart from that, I really don't have, I, I, I could, I could talk for a long time, but that's not the purpose of this. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, John. All right, with that, we're going to open it up to public comment. And so again, I'm going to reemphasize, we're allowing three minutes for public comment. So we'd ask that you stay within that, because it looks like we have several people that would like to talk tonight. We'd ask that you keep from clapping or making comments, so that we're respectful to everybody that's here. So with that said, if you'd like to speak, we'd ask that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Morrison. I live at nine zero nine Prince Court in Kingsview Estate. So when I talked to the planning commission, I reminded them of the experience in Paradise, California, when eighty people died in their car cars trying to get out of a fire, because there was only one way in and one way out. And I'm sure you probably remember that horrific experience. So the fear is still there in Kingsview Estates. We fear not being able to get out in time. And I know that Mr. Mayor has proposed an emergency exit, and I would just like to stop for a moment and because I'm sure that most of you have probably all driven down Kingsview Road on the way out to Devil's or wherever you might be going, Snooks. And I will not say that that emergency exit is a joke, as some people are saying, because I know that he has tried very hard to find another way out of this subdivision. But if you see how it's supposed to go, you will see that it's a problem. It's in the floodplain. Not only that, but it's locked. We can't get out until somebody from emergency services shows up to unlock that gate. We can't get out until somebody from emergency services shows up to unlock that gate. Until they show up, we are trapped there with only one road out. So I just wanted to say that, um, and I know I only got three minutes, so I'm talking really fast. But, um, when I moved there fifteen years ago, Snooks Bottom was basically a gravel pit with water in it. And the city has done an incredible job improving it so that more people have access to it and they are enjoying it. And then, uh, the city put in a disc golf course, which also included, uh, more space for people to enjoy Snooks Bottom. Um, and at that time Devil's Canyon, you parked your horse trailers in Devil's Canyon parking lot. Until it got so full that BLM created a whole new parking lot for horse trailers. And that's how much or traffic has increased. Please understand, and I know you know this, but McGuinness Canyon Recreation Area is not for Kingsview people. It's for the entire valley and probably beyond. People, those parking lots are not full of Kingsview people. Those parking lots are full of people from all over the valley that come down one road, Kingsview Road. And when I drive out Fowler Drive, which is our only way out of our subdivision, and I look to my right where three forty comes up, there's a steep hill and a blind curve. And there's Fowler. You come from the other direction, steep hill, blind curve, Fowler. Every, every truck pulling a horse trailer has to accelerate up those hills. Everybody FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, every car, every, every vehicle has to accelerate. And there's a blind curve and there is Fowler. And that's our only way out.
Hey Kathleen, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Final thought there.
I'm sorry?
Your final thought was about the access.
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say, please, please. I know you're going to approve this, but please, would you accept the recommendations of the planning commission? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? All right, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Day, sixteen seventy-six Fowler. I want to echo my neighbor's concerns about the emergency access. I'm no stranger to progress. Progress is inevitable. Eight years ago, when I bought my house over there, I stood on my back porch and I looked out at that open field and I said, Michael, if you're lucky, you've got twenty years to enjoy this, if you're lucky. Shortly after I moved in, this proposal came to the table. And it was much different than what I'm, I heard at the planning commission. The development was going to happen to the west, not down below. I know I only have three minutes, so let's, let's touch on a couple of things. We like our open spaces. We love our fruit of fireworks. We love our concerts in the park. Members of the council, if this development goes in as it is planned with these one hundred and twenty houses, we will no longer have our fireworks. We will no longer have our music in the park. Those will be the first two things to go away. The access that Mr. Moyer is proposing as an emergency relief to get out is preposterous. It's absurd. If you want an example of just how dangerous it can be, this year was the first year that the city didn't close off access to Snooks Bottom for our fireworks. And the public, general public was able to go in there. Now I went to bed and I have a, I'm very fortunate where I am. And I didn't have to suffer that which our community all over Mesa County had to suffer. But ladies and gentlemen, I'm told that it took those folks three hours to get out of there. Three hours to get out of there, all those folks. Now you add one hundred and twenty houses with an average of two cars getting in and out of there. You're talking about two hundred and forty more cars on a daily basis. Plus, the general public was coming to visit and try to enjoy Snooks Bottom, which will quickly go away. You will lose that. So not only would I ask that you take the majority of what the planning commission has recommended with regard to the traffic survey, if you're going to move forward, make that so. Without question, you cannot move any further until this traffic survey is done. And please don't do it in the winter time.
All right, Michael, your time is up. Did you want to finish your thought on that?
And the last thing I would ask is that you cut this development in half. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Uh, can you wait till you get up to the microphone so we get that on record?
Kathy Clifford at one six seven eight Fowler. And of course, same thing on Fowler. We know all these things that we've all already talked about. My primary interest, like Catherine, and I used to work in fire protection. That was my career. Of course, it was outside. It wasn't like Palisade, California. But where I worked, and I'm not, I'll try and make it quick. At the time, I was still doing fire protection in Reno was when MGM had the tremendous fire there. And I watched on TV in the office where we worked. And that was a horrible scene. I'll never forget it. And I'll try not to cry, but some of you are young enough, you might not remember that. And like she was talking about Palisade, Palisade, I don't care if we're on desert land. It can still happen. It's dangerous. It's really dangerous. Catherine and I went down to the fire department today. The fire marshal wasn't there, but they said that this meets fire IFC, International Fire Codes. But like Michael said, it does not take into consideration about all these other outlying areas that we've all come to enjoy and everybody outside of Kingsview, all the Grand Junction people, other visitors, you all know how busy it is. And that, that road, that is just not going to get it. I'm sorry. It's really dangerous. And I'm really scared that this for children, say, living in that area. It's, it's all just too much. I guess that's about it. I hate to see, it isn't just of going to affect the people in that neighborhood. It's going to affect all of you and everybody else. And Grand Junctions and wherever people come from. We see, and it's wonderful, like they said, having the horse areas and the, um, all the climb, all the hiking. It's wonderful, but it isn't just our neighborhood people. It's everybody. So I hope you guys think about this. We didn't have much luck at the fire department today because they said it meets fire codes. I don't care. It isn't just fire codes. It's, it's the people we love and our families and you. It isn't just, it isn't just the Kingsview residents. Thank you. I know they've done a lot of studies and it all looks good on people. But it's deeper than that. You really need to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else in the audience? Please step up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Vera Mulder. I live in nine eighty-three East Paper Avenue, Fruta, Colorado. And I've been there since nineteen eighty-six. And we were speaking tonight. Uh, I have some questions. The so-called, um, gets to safety area is going to go through this golf area. I wonder how safe that's going to be because I, I, I walk this golf all the time. I walk Snooks all the time. How is, how is the road going to be built down that rocky cliff that's at the end of that thing? That's not safe and that's going to cost extra thing. And why is the city going to provide money for a rich developer to put his development in that he couldn't though for twenty years? That's one. Number two, every, everybody's mentioned that people from all over the valley come to Snooks. They go to Opal Circle. They have horse thief. And you, and I read, I was reading, uh, the, the information you have in your packet about mine springs and how mental health issues are really important in our valley. Do you realize what Snooks does, a, a walk around there? Do you know, do you realize what open spaces do for people who need to have open spaces to get their mindset? You know, to, to get back to normal. We do not need and developments encroaching upon areas that are sacred for the human being. This goes for Inoc Lake too, and I know I mispronounced that word. Traffic, I have a lead foot, I admit it. But going up that road and coming down that road is something else. I've watched high schoolers zip through there. In fact, was it two years ago where the high school a pickup tripped over when it was doing wheelies on the gravel road? And we had to rescue those kids from, they weren't hurt. Pickup got smashed. You know, that kind of thing goes on. Then there are people who live back there in whatever that division is. What are they going to do with the increased traffic? What about people accessing Horse Thief Canyon, our valley itself, with that hunters, for instance, hikers, water issues? You know, development is wonderful when it's done right, but we don't need to overdevelopment. We don't need the overdevelopment. And I hate public speaking, so you can tell anyway. So I hope that you'll take those things into consideration. We do not need this development, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? All right, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Clausen. I live at nine two six Laura Court in Kingsview Estates. My house backs up onto Kingsview Road. Um, first, I want to thank the developer and his company um, for trying to take into consideration everything that we have talked about as much as he possibly can. Second, I would like to give a few numbers. These are numbers that I've found online. They are not exact or anything like that, but just to give you some numbers. Um, the city of Fruta is internationally known and it's estimated that seven hundred and twenty-six thousand visitors uh, came to Fruta just in two thousand seventeen. And that was, what, several years ago? Uh, Snooks Bottom is one of the parks, if you will, that is frequented in that area. It consists of fishing, bird watching, swimming, dog park, disc golf course, tournaments, cross-country races, competitions. There is parking, but there are always traffic issues. The BLM estimates over three hundred thousand visitors per year at McGuinness Canyon's National Conservation Area. Here, they do hiking, horseback riding, hunting, fishing, mountain biking, wildlife viewing. Also, the Colorado National Monument estimates that five hundred thousand to one million visitors per year go on the monument. Now granted, we're not responsible for the monument, but we are right next door. I tried to contact CDOT, the Lower Valley Fire Department, Fruta Public Works and the BLM, and I was unsuccessful. My point is, I am strongly against having only an emergency exit. I am terrified, just as a previous resident has said, of what could happen. I have seen children walking along with their fishing poles, walking down Kingsview Road. I have seen car accidents happen. I have seen horse trailers fall over the edge. Cars fall over the edge over there at Snooks Bottom. We've had accidents left and right. And yes, this past, uh, Fourth of July, there were three hours worth of traffic because all the public was allowed to come in. That's very nice that we allowed that. But that was very difficult for us residents who were there that night. Um, so again, I won't worry you with anything else. But I wanted to say, please take into consideration the emergency exit as more than just a gated area. Thank you very much for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? All right, if you'd please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, I'm Dave Crisney. Um, I am nine one seven Squire Court. Um, I'm on Squire Court, which is filing one. So when you go into Kingsview, you turn right. And so we're that first filing down there. Bud Pearson was a retired biologist and he was the president of Kingsview in, uh, nineteen ninety-five. He worked for about four years with John Schneider. John Schneider, uh, was the city manager at that time. We had this sewer system that was not necessarily mechanically failing, but George Pavlakis, who was the developer, wasn't complying to state standards. And he was trying to get out of it and we were trying to get him out of it. And George worked with about fifty residents there for about four years. Uh, it was a difficult task to get the residents to agree to about six thousand dollars apiece. Um, the thing that Fruta paid for was the oversizing from eight inch to ten inch. And then, um, John did get, uh, a, a partial grant. And then we were able to secure a three percent loan, which we all, um, many of us participated in. And, uh, Margaret would send us a thing monthly each time to, to explain what that was and we would pay it down. There's a recapture agreement with that. Reason I say that is because shortly after that, then George Pavlakis came in with filing three. And the city allowed him to put filing three in, in Mesa County standards. There weren't curb gutter sidewalks and things. Um, and the agreement was he gave Snooks Bottom to the city of Fruta, which you now have as your disc golf course. And he paid nearly half of what the cost was supposed to be to re-engineer Kingsview Drive from Highway three forty to Fowler Drive. And then following that, uh, the city was pursuing, uh, um, other participants to participate in that. So when our residents saw this come back in two thousand and six, the assumption was Kingsview Road improvements would have been completed, which was XL DXL left turn lane on Kingsview Drive, as well as an alignment with Rimrock Rodeo across the street. And road improvements from Highway three forty to Fowler Drive. There's a number of drainage issues that affect that whole area as well as what you're hearing described is elevation changes, uh, which create sight distance issues along Kingsview Drive. So the idea was to reconstruct Kingsview Drive. The developer is talking about doing part of that plan. And then CDOT has done, um, kind of what was the XL DXL. Uh, they did that under a constrained plan in twenty sixteen, I believe is what it was. They didn't do everything they wanted to do, but they did as much as they could with what they had. Can I just go just a second more?
Yeah, finish.
Well, I had a couple of, a couple of thoughts. One of them is that.
Well, you get one because we gotta keep everybody on time here.
So at planning, um, John was agreeing that maximum height would be twenty-five feet for all the homes in the subdivision. And that was appreciation of what, uh, the current, uh, homes were, as well as appreciating that this is a monument preservation area. He's also talking about something because like he's calling them casitas.
All right, Dave, I'm gonna have to cut you off because I.
And he knows them as ADUs. This is an important point. I believe.
But you already have gone.
I believe that it should appear on the plaque.
Dave, I'm going to ask you, we've, I've given you extra time, um, but I ask you to finish that one thought. And so, thank you. Vera, I'm sorry, you don't have the mic. You can't speak. All right, we're going to open up, uh, to anybody else that has, uh, public comment at this time. We've got right back here and then we'll come up here to you. So if you'd please state your name and address for the record.
Jeff T. Miller, nine eighteen Crown Court. Mayor and council staff, public. Twenty seventeen, my wife and I. Twenty seventeen, my wife and I chose to live in Kingsview Estates. We were blessed to have the view, have the opportunity to be near nature and green areas when we get moisture. We chose Fruta over the eastern slope because of the sprawl. I just want to caution that we make it win-win and maybe downsize some of the plans that we have so that Fruta doesn't become the next Moab where the locals are complaining about success running them out. Fruta also has that same concern, I think, coming around the corner. We have to think of growth, but also manageable, thoughtful consideration to that. And so I'd hate to see Moab or the Front Range come to Fruta and ruin what we do have. I realize progress is progress and I realize I got to come here and blessed with that. And I'm not trying to prevent anyone or Mr. Moyer from getting his, his investments going. But I just want us to make it win-win. Take a look at the stress on the three forty bridge at the river, the access, how close that emergency access and the intersection is to that. We also have consideration for the rest of the school district students that come in on three forty across that bridge and that traffic. And as it continues to grow between Grand Junction and Fruta, the stress on that. And I won't reiterate all the stress on Kingsview. But also has consideration been given, and I mentioned at the Planning Commission, a geological study, has it been done in that area for the soils, erosions? But also anthropological and archaeological. Some of those areas are unique for some of the locals that I've talked with. So I just ask that you consider the win-win, have some thought about my concerns and the concerns of the public. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, right here. Again, if you'd state your name and address for the record?
V Hill, nine, live in nine four five Prince Court, next door. And we have a large parcel next to Kingsview subdivision and the and Mr. Moyer's planned development. Anyway, I'd like to say is all I've heard in the first meeting and the second meeting is nothing but negative comments about this is going to impact this and how people's lives are going to change as a result. I'd like to say that for a developer to give, give up forty percent of their land to accommodate a small subdivision like this is incredible. I'd like to commend John for that. And the tax base that he has been paying on this parcel for years that has benefited City of Fruta and the community, I can, I can only imagine. My tax base, our tax base, my wife and I, Glenna and I, pay incredible amounts just to have a parcel next to us that's thirty-five acres. And I'd like to say, I'm not gonna get personal about it, but this gentleman here has paid incredible amount of taxes to hold on to this, to develop it. And I hear comments like, oh, he's rich, he's this, is this, that. The risk that developers and contractors take is incredible. Many of them have gone broke doing this. If, I just want to tell the public, general public to wake up. You know, when I hear comments like, oh, they're gonna build six hundred thousand dollar houses and things like that. Let's, let's look at what developers are looking at and what builders are looking at. The going rate is three hundred dollars a square foot now. We're going through hyperinflation and things like this. You know, it's gonna happen, you know, and the impact that the tax revenue will take, that will give to improve Kingsview Road. If it's not for developers and builders and such, these things would not take place. You wouldn't have an access road, an emergency access road. You wouldn't, Kingsview wouldn't have turn lanes. You wouldn't have all these things that, that people have, have gone out of the way to say they're all worried about the fire, fire dangers. Well, right now, if Kingsview's road is not developed and there's no emergency access road, if there is a fire danger, it's gonna be worse right now than if, you know, at least we'd have an emergency exit. So I guess what I'm trying to say is is our, is our glass half full or half empty? Let's, let's get real about this. Anyway, that's my comment. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Steve. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right, if you'd please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Pat O'Connor. I live at nine oh one Kingsview or nine oh one Crown Court in Kingsview. So I'm not opposed to development either. I've been a, I'm a land development engineer myself. I've been so for forty-five years. So I've done a lot of this myself, but I do expect it to conform with the guidelines established by the city planners and engineers. And my main concern is just like most of my neighbors here tonight, it's about traffic. And I'm very glad to hear that an updated traffic study is, is proposed. That's obviously needed. You know, it needs to account for the explosion in the use of all of that, all of those trailheads back there in McGinnis Canyons. You know, Snooks Bottom, the incredible amount of increased use there, you know, because the city's done a great job of making a park out of that. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-nine, so I've seen all of this firsthand. I've seen it grow from a few cars in the parking lot at most of those trailheads on a weekend to now seeing some days on a day of the week where you can't even park in the parking lots. You're parking on the streets and the access roads leading up to those. So you've got Devil's Canyon, you've got Snooks, Snooks Bottom, you have the horse trailer parking, Fruta Paleo Area, Pollock Canyon Trailhead. Many other smaller unknown or lesser known trailheads that where people park and take off on hikes. You have a Division of Wildlife farm and hunting facility down there. There's another subdivision at the end of Horse Thief Canyon Road with twenty or twenty-five lots. I just want to be sure everybody is aware of the incredible amount of activity and, and traffic that potential there is back there now. And all of these places and, and, you know, eighty-five or so lots in Kingsview plus a hundred and twenty-two new proposed lots. They're all going in and out at one access point, and that's three forty in Kingsview Road. I just, I just don't know of another development in the, in the valley that is like that. And you've got, you've got an outbound left turn lane too, to complicate that. It's not an outbound right turn like the ridges subdivision. It's an outbound left turn where you have to cross both lanes of traffic. So it's, it's a tough traffic situation. I'm very glad to hear there's a, a new study proposed. And I just want to, I want to talk about for a second, the some of the City of Fruta design criteria and construction specs right out of their manual. Section four point two under Street System Design Criteria says local streets, which are the typical streets you'd see in a subdivision, can handle a thousand vehicles per day, an ADT of a thousand. After that, a minor collector is required, which is a wider pavement with sidewalks on both sides.
Pat, your time is up. I finished that thought.
Hundred and twenty-two new lots will produce an ADT by itself of over twelve hundred. So you're already exceeding that criteria for, to require a minor collector. And that should be from three forty all the way back to the end of this subdivision. So I, I had a subdivision in years ago.
Cut you off, Pat, because
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Sure.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make public comment? This is your final opportunity. Once we close public comment, there will not be an opportunity for public to speak. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to council. So now's the opportunity for council to ask questions, both the developer and city staff or city attorney, and have our open discussion on some of the items that have been brought up tonight. So who would like to start? Nobody's volunteering? All right, all right.
I'll start.
All right, Matthew, thank you.
I don't want to give up my right to ask questions.
Oh, you can ask questions at any time until we close.
So first one is, I'm glad to hear that we're gonna do a traffic, updated traffic study. Do we, I do, I did hear a comment, which I thought was important, which is the seasonality of when that study would happen. With the realization that if you do it in the middle of January, February, it's gonna have very different numbers in June and July. So I mean, I personally would like to see that study happen during the peak season and versus non-peak season, if that's a possibility. It's kind of one of the first things that came to mind. Clearly, the emergency service access and I think this is my ignorance of not knowing why that would be, why that needs to be locked. And I would just look for some clarification on that. I just don't understand. Yes, that is a question.
I'll take it. So I don't believe it has to be locked. I think we can leave it unlocked. The problem that could arise is if we have motorized vehicles running through there as a non-emergency situation, the fire department would probably have something to say about that. But otherwise, we can keep that unlocked.
Thank you. Who else should go?
All right, well, perhaps we're making it easy. Janine, I'm gonna go around the, we're gonna go around the table here.
I will echo Matthew's gratitude in hearing that there's gonna be a new traffic study. And yeah, I think really so much hinges on what that looks like. That's it feels like very valid concerns. Somebody mentioned about the fire department saying it needs code, but that it's not taking into consideration anything, any other traffic that goes in there than the subdivision. Does anyone know if that's an accurate statement?
I don't know for sure, but Travis Holder would have made comment if he felt this was an unsafe situation.
Taking into account tourism and all of the recreational traffic going, going into farther back. You are assuming that that's the case.
I don't, I don't believe the fire code takes into consideration the quantity of traffic.
Okay.
Strictly geometry and whether they can get an apparatus in there, whether they can turn an apparatus in a cul-de-sac so that they have enough room to respond to a facility.
Does a traffic study take that into consideration? Like when we're, more specifically, not necessarily a house fire, but let's take into account the idea that we might have a lack of better word, forest, a desert, a fire in the desert, a wildfire, thank you. Is that something that a traffic study would cover? Like what that would look like if that kind of occurred, if a natural disaster occurred?
No. And let me, let me introduce myself. I'm Sam Atkins, the city engineer.
Yeah, I know, I
I know, I know. Last time I had people ask me after the meeting who I was, so. No, the traffic study is only gonna, going to take in consideration the quantity of traffic, the speed at which the the roads are posted. So the, the turn lane are based on volume, turning volume movements and speed at which the road is posted.
Okay. So where's the proper data that we can make an informed decision on safety in those sorts of circumstances? Yeah.
I also asked, is that ever part of the consideration in any other subdivision?
All right, so Henry's got a, I think
Yeah, so I think some, some thoughts that have been placed on the emergency and, and fire potential that could happen is in the PUD guide as an exhibit to the ordinance, all of the dwelling units that are kind of interior to the subdivision, not, not filing one or two, which are more towards Squire Court, but they're all required to have fire sprinklers installed inside the house. So that would turn on if there was a fire alarm that went off. And so that's further implementation of like the fire flows that are adequate from Mute Water and the fire department, they coordinate on those things. But also having it in the, in the zoning ordinance that when they pull a building permit, they'll be required to show fire sprinklers in all the dwelling units that are called out on that. So that's also another protection for property owners around there is that that fire is less likely to spread.
Okay. In regards to exiting, exiting that area, though, that's not, that's not
We'd ask the audience not to make any comments, please. You guys have had your opportunity. So no, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to. We opened up this for public comment and we've allowed the public to make comment. This is a time now for council to make decisions and ask questions based on what we've heard from the public and we're gonna try and clarify those. So the public wants to keep interrupting, it's gonna slow down this process. And so we're respectfully asking the public not to make comments. You've had your opportunity. So with that, we'll get back to Janine. You're being disrespectful to Janine. She's the one that's got the floor right now. So Janine, if you'd like to finish your thought. I know, I'm sorry, ma'am, you're gonna have to be quiet. Kathleen, we'd ask you to, we're asking you not to make comment right now.
Thanks, Henry, for that. I still feel unsure. I guess I'm, I'm really interested in the idea of exit strategies in case of a fire. Well, I'm not only based on what I'm hearing from the public, but just my own, it seems like a very reasonable concern. Wondering where we can get information that could help us out with, with that sort of, with that proper information. Like if, if everybody who live there and then taking account, maybe what a daily traffic that goes in there had to get out, where, how do we know that we're talking about a reasonable way to do that?
All right, Dan, then would you state your name and title for the record, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Dan Karas. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Fruta. I think that, you know, just taking a step back, like we're talking about the zoning, you know, so how many units are we going to allow to be built over said acreage? And then approving a general preliminary layout of a subdivision that then will get subsequent final plan and final plat applications where the level of like of granular detail goes up exponentially. So I think that what you're asking for is something that could be subjected to a filing plan where there is an emergency egress plan that the city works with the fire department on and lets the residents know. I think that's certainly something that we could explore as a condition of approval. What that looks like will, is a little opaque because who knows to the level of detail that that would, that would go into, but but Sam is a hundred percent correct that they're gonna look at the fire flows and like how to protect this proposal. They're not gonna take into account existing deficiencies or make Mr. Moyer upgrade those facilities because in all likelihood, they might be lesser than those code standards present today. So we can certainly add that as a condition of approval if that is the will of the council, that we come up with some sort of egress plan for the totality of the subdivision of Kingsview and of Sunset Point, if that's what you'd like us to do, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, City Attorney. So I, I think Dan touched on this, but just a reminder that you do have two things before you. The first is an ordinance, whether or not to rezone this parcel as a PUD per the guidelines that have been set in for setbacks. Height, all of that, everything else. The second is whether or not to approve the preliminary plan for the PUD, which is where the, some of the conditions Dan was just talking about, conditions that have already been recommended by Planning Commission. That's where conditions can be added to if, you know, if the zoning passes. So just a reminder as to the kind of order of things.
Thank you. I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
All right, James.
Definitely the traffic study, I, I, 2007 traffic study doesn't do anything for me whatsoever. And I definitely think it needs to be. Peak time, of course. That's, that's just. Massive information that we need before we can really make this.
Go ahead, Sam. Just wait, I'm just going to clarify. So when. Traffic engineer does a traffic study, there is a set of factors that CDOT has that pro rates. To the peak month. So if you, and, and I'm not suggesting that they're going to take their traffic counts on Thanksgiving Day or during Christmas break. But there, there are ways to. Project to the highest month and the numbers that are used are the peak hour. Counts. It's not just, hey, we counted at night. They count continuously for an entire week. And then they take the peak hours of those days. And that's what they use to. Calculate their. Improvements.
Thanks for the clarification. I, I, again, I just feel like it's a very important piece of this. In recent memory. The traffic study that happened for Muse, I don't think was done appropriately. I don't think it included enough to include the traffic. That was involved at the school there. So just for. Particular reasoning, I feel like the traffic study is a very important piece at this point that we're missing. On that point, they did mention that it's the first time we've ever had the fireworks traffic up there. And it took three hours for those cars to get out of there. I know that the answer is no, but I'm still going to ask this. Is there any way we have an estimate of how many cars that was that night?
We could probably talk to the police department, but I have no idea.
It would be nice to know just because it is going to give us kind of a view into. I mean, sure, that was an excessive night, but it might get us a little closer to what we're looking like. How do we put all these homes in there? On what they're going to be dealing with more on a regular basis.
Take into the consideration the congestion that was down at the bottom, though. I really don't feel like that would be a fair comparison.
Yeah, that's true.
Reason they could not get onto 340 is because of everybody.
Everything all together.
Down town.
Sure.
Area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. I would just like to know, you know, what that was like.
A conversation that we should be having.
Sure.
Future for like. Even planning.
Yeah.
We might need to either. Limit or. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that, that's.
Anyway, that, that was just the thought that came across my mind that I thought that would be it. I didn't expect to get an answer, but that would be nice to know. And I'm, I might be completely off on this, but. Right now, the way that in the area that that is, the way that this sits, if they didn't need the PUD. In that same. Section, would we have four, 54 homes would fit? Because is, am I understanding correctly that right now it's zoned as an acre? Per home?
Right.
So we're using the density from the open space to put everybody in there, correct?
For the proposal, yes. So the proposal would, the proposal is in front of you for the rezone is it, it would be clustering.
Sure.
That development, but if you did not do the rezone, it is still under those Mesa County entitlements, which is one dwelling per acre. Without that density, that clustering.
Mm hmm. So in that cluster, it would have to be 54.
I'm sorry, 132 acres. I got confused.
It's okay. But it, to fall in the way that it would be now in that same space, we'd have to have 54. Is that correct?
54 homes would be in. There's 100.
Well, I'm saying in a 54, I'm meaning the footprint they're putting.
I know, but there's 132 acres total. So if we kept it one home per acre, then if they still wanted to do 132 homes, it would be. 132 homes on, one on.
So that's why I'm saying this space that they're trying to use, which should actually be 54.
So you're kind of going to.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to say.
So you're trying to get to the point of. If they didn't do the PUD, it could be up to 132 homes.
Well, that would be the whole thing if we didn't have any.
Correct, in terms of what it was originally zoned at.
Yeah. Well, I was actually talking about the actual space that's trying to actually be used. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right page with them.
That's right.
I, again, my main thing on this really is the access, I. I don't see any other way we can do any other road out of there and I'm. Still on the fence with the emergency access. It doesn't sound like it's really the greatest option. But one way in and out of there really is scary. It just is. I, I, I don't know. I mean. I know that it's all. Thought about and it's, you know, there's people are much brighter than I am on this, but just looking at that, it doesn't, it doesn't look. Very safe to me, but. I don't know yet. I guess that's all I really have at this point.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I weigh in on this? As this application is not the first time it's come through. We don't control the access to. Highway 340, that's controlled by CDOT. The last time this went through, the emergency access was the only option. The. If, if you were to try to create a permanent access. Down where Snooks is, it would not be approved by CDOT. It's too close to the bridge, too close to the other access. It would create safety issues in its, in itself.
Yeah, the reality of it is there really is only that one, the space for the, the one road.
Yeah, the, the topography of this area just doesn't allow for.
Exactly.
Very logically, I guess. Or easily.
And, and I hate to, to say that, but that's where I look at this and I just feel like we're putting too much back there. It just. With the other things that are going on there, I. You have one, you get a fire back there, you have one car break down on the way out, everybody's stuck in there. I, I don't know. I, I can understand why people are concerned.
And one thing I also just wanted to follow up on with regard to why you don't have an updated traffic study in front of you. That would not be something you'd be doing, a developer would do with regard to the rezone. And so, you know, if the rezone is not adopted. Then the need for a traffic study goes away. So just, just so you understand that it's not something that just was forgotten or not done or not updated, you know. There, there's a logical reason for why that would happen after the rezone is adopted and the preliminary plan, because that indicates what. You know, what traffic then you need to factor in when you're doing the study for your methodology and everything else.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, that.
And I want to ask one question. So if it's, if the rezone doesn't go through, it could still be built on with 132 homes and it wouldn't require a traffic study. Is that correct?
We would still require.
We would require it as part of the planning process.
Yeah, I, correct.
I think just to, just to restate it a different way, typically at this stage of the process in the zoning or preliminary is not when you see traffic studies, you see it and then later stages or we see it and then. You've put conditions on it that those had, that what's said in the traffic study to be met. So this is not an anomaly that there isn't a traffic study yet. It's that you wouldn't spend the money on a traffic study before you have your zoning or a preliminary plans because you, then you have to find out what the traffic study would be. Then it would be worth spending the money on. And then you have to, we can require that those recommendations are implemented in that final plan. So we just, I know it's a, it's a big focus, it's very important. We take it very important as staff. But wanted to point out, this isn't, this isn't a, a unique. Situation of the timing of where we're at with this subdivision.
And your name and title was again.
I'm, sorry, I'm Mike Bennett, City Manager.
All right, thanks, Mike.
And again, I would say thank you guys for the clarification on the processes for us because for us, some of us, we're trying to figure out. Where we're supposed to be looking at and what parts of this. And there are some things obviously that step out like that's a major concern, obviously for us. So we're just really, that. That's information that we need to know and it's nice to know that it's not required at this point. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think I, just to reiterate though, our planning director, Dan Karas, what, what, he, he made some suggestions that you consider if that be, if that. Being something that you is definitely of interest, it's something you can place conditions on. Again, it's not the zoning, but something we can have a discussion about for the, the.
Sure. Thanks, Mike.
Good. Ken?
I don't have anything, any questions or comments that aren't part of the review comments or haven't been said. No, I, I appreciate that John is trying to work with the subdivision, having meetings. Looking at the improvements that we've needed up there for a long time and trying to make some, so. Yeah.
I have anything else? Okay, Amy?
I think it's important to note that if this went like straight zoned, it would look not near as. Pretty as this. Like it would look a lot different and we would not be getting the improvements that we're hoping to see, you know, with this. And. I think it's a very well thought out plan, you know, the way that he's laid it out. It's, it's, it's very contiguous with what is there. And I also loved when I realized I was doing some math. He's leaving 64 acres of open space. That's 12 and a half times the required space for this. He's only required to, to five and, 5.12 acres. So 12 and a half times, where do we see that ever? Like ever, ever, like we're begging for open space. We're usually saying, please give us, you know, a, a half an acre. And he's giving us 64. Like I, I would hate to see that get chunked up into parcels that have one massive home be built on them. That's my fear. Like I, my fear is that, that it goes just straight zoned and we see this big sprawling mansion, you know.
Lose all that open space.
And we lose all that.
We actually end up with more homes.
Exactly. Yeah, I, you know, when you, when you think about what it would, could potentially be. I think it's far, far, far less appealing and far less what Fruta's striving for. And. These are much more, I know that $650,000 sounds like just astronomical and it is like, we're that's, it's crazy that that's where we're at. But the homes that would be on the bigger lots, we're talking one and a half million. And up. I mean, there's homes around the corner that, there's one that was just built for $8 million. Eight. It's insanity. So. I would much rather see $650,000 homes go in there in a condensed area. And I love the idea of an egress plan. I think that that would be really great to make sure that everybody, you know, has a plan and is on the same page where, okay, if something does happen, because. It is scary and it is, you know, fire is a, it's a hazard that we face on the western slope. We see it, so.
All right, Aaron.
Thank you, everybody for coming out and I appreciate everybody's comments, concerns, questions. We do take them into consideration. As we review things and we appreciate John and what he's proposing here. Couple of questions. Just to continue that process. Thing for everybody to be reminded of. So tonight we're talking about rezone and. I'm drawing a blank on the other.
Preliminary PUD plan.
So that's, that's tonight. So what are the next, like, so between now and the proposed. Start putting a shovel in the ground. What are the, what are the other steps that we are get, will have between tonight and. If shovels can be put into ground to build.
Yeah. Is it just for you?
For you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron. And in anticipation of that question. To be 100% transparent with the public who's obviously interested as well, is that the planning and development has obviously, like I showed the three steps. The final step being after tonight, after the conclusion, our code. States that the final plan application be submitted within 180 days. Of let's hypothetically say that a decision is made tonight. And then the final PUD plan is then sent out for review again to our review agency partners. Including CDOT, Ute Water, Excel Energy and the Fire Department. And then those decisions and those review comments are reviewed administratively to ensure that comments and conditions placed on the application. From the review agency partners and the council have been adequately addressed without like a crazy significant redesign. And then those decisions and future filings would then happen administratively with final plans each time.
So there's no, the rest past this point will be all administratively processed?
Yes.
We won't, we won't see it again.
Correct. Correct. And so we've heard enough from, or we appreciate all that staff. I want one for, a question for John. What's, what's the use of the open space? How does that? How? Is that given to that neighborhood, given to the city? I don't remember the process, but I, I want to hear you say something since we've asked enough that staff already, right?
You do have to repeat. I'm John Moyer. Mesa Street. So I think that's a good question. The open space is dedicated to the city of Fruta. They'll do with it as they want. We provide a trail through it. That is also dedicated to the city of Fruta. And, and that's. Pretty much, pretty much it. I, I did want to say, since you've given me an opportunity, maybe the three minutes starts clicking.
We don't have a time limit, John, for applicant or for city or for council, so. Let us know what your thoughts are.
You know, obviously, if I'm going to be selling homes to people. One of my main concerns is also safety, right? I mean. The last thing you want is to build a house that's not safe, that doesn't meet the, the, the needs of, of the residents. That's why we proposed and we've taken a hard look at the emergency access. I know you don't think that, that, that it's an adequate secondary access. But right now there is no secondary access. There's nothing other than Kingsview Road. We have. Talked to the fire department about this. The fire department. Knows they can get their emergency vehicles up through there. We can bring. The level of that road above floodplain stage. So it's a, it's, it's, it's. An access that is usable. Whether you can get 200 cars an hour out of that emergency access, I would doubt it.
Be hard to get.
Exactly. And, and it does, it, it, it's just that. It's an emergency access, but I also want to reiterate one other thing that hasn't been given much play. And that is if you have pedestrians or bicyclists coming up into this area, this is an access that they can use rather than. Climbing all the way up 340 to Kingsview Road. It serves as a trail that gets people up to the monument. So it, it's kind of a connectivity. I'd like to believe and, and you all can, can see it however you'd like. I'm not trying to sell it. I'm just trying to. Be factual in terms of what it provides to the city of Fruta.
And John, can you reiterate the road improvements that you're proposing with. Along Kingsview. With your build out of this proposed.
So, so right now, I mean, much is going to hinge on this traffic study. And, and, and let me just say, you know, sure, it was done back in 2007, but traffic studies, you know, they look out 20 years. So. Where we're at today is probably pretty much where that traffic study was projecting us to be. CDOT made some improvements. What we. Have been suggesting since back in like 2005, when we were starting to work on this, was making. An improvement to the geometry of Kingsview Road where intersects with Highway 340. I think that. The traffic study is going to certainly want to see that. I think it's going to want to see. Some further improvements to 340 and Kingsview intersection. What those are though, I really can't say. I know that, that planning commission's concerned about pedestrian traffic from the bus stop, primarily the bus stop back into. Kingsview. And so I think we need to figure that out, how to make that pedestrian connectivity. I was talking to, by the way, Eric. Slavon is here. He's our engineer. From. That's been working on this project with us. We really don't know what all of that detail needs to look at until we take it to the next level. Eric suggested that we probably should take that sidewalk all the way down to Snooks Bottom, since that, that's an accessibility. Issue from currently, we have people who live in Kingsview who walk across this property. Up onto Kingsview Road, they're concerned about that pedestrian accessibility. How are they going to be able to. Uh, how are they going to be able to continue to do that? So I think that needs to be worked out with with staff as as we work on what this final engineering is going to look like for this project.
I have a couple more things just writing down. I think this one's for you, Sam. So what are the things that we could see as recommendations with the traffic study? That would be different than what we have currently existing?
With uh, an increase in overall traffic and the increase in turning movements, there is storage that is added to some of these turn lanes. So they could actually lengthen in order to accommodate the turns and get out of the through lane, so to speak.
Thank you. Um.
Are you, are you asking what parameters could be?
All right, let's be have speaking to the mic.
Sorry. Are you asking if council can put parameters or requirements on the traffic study? Is that what you're asking?
I think he's asking.
No, no, just what the traffic study can do. Um, but that was, that was my other, so with John talking about that connectivity between three forty and Snooks. That's, that's something that, yes, he's, he's agreeing, or he's willing to discuss with staff through the administrative process from would be between now and shovel in the ground. Um, what, what other opportunities do we have in negotiations with, with John to uh, help improve that area?
As far as just conditions you could put?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know. You want to speak to that or Dan?
I think, I think the pedestrian connect, connection is definitely one on the table. So that is, you get those uh, walkers off of just the shoulder of the existing Kingsview Drive.
Um, just to, to conclude my comments, you know, I, I I like what Amy was saying that there's, there's some definitely, she added some, just some good clarity for us and I want to reiterate it. Um, we've got some good positives that are coming from this proposal that we've got sixty-four acres of open space that's ours and it backs up to, uh, I think that's B L M and other agencies that have um, have that land. Uh, even with the per se challenges, if you want to call it that, with the emergency access, we get another access. Um, I know I always have concerns when we see some of these just regular neighborhood subdivisions to where we get a second egress. But it's a stuffed road. This is something that actually is functioning today, not if another development comes up, because I always have heartache over that. I don't really like that. Um, but this is something that is there, can be done and improved. Um, I also agree, I, this is one, another one that Amy said, like the home layout, that it's all, and I guess James, you, you brought it to like two, that these homes with the density, they're able to cluster things to where we can still get that open space and it matches the develop, the prior development and um, I think limits a lot of risk there. Um, and then connectivity, I really hope that we can put that into um, our conditions to, to have that um, met. Uh, it sounds like John's very willing to um, be serious about that. Um, because I think that's huge for our community. That would be a great asset from a developer to our community to link um, those roads, create safety for, for children that live in the area, plus everybody in the community.
Um, you're talking about a sidewalk along.
Yeah, all up, up to, yeah, up Kingsview, all the way up to, to Snooks. I think that's it. There's a lot of bonus or benefits that we're going to get from this development. Um, I understand, definitely understand the concerns with various things, you know, the one main road, one main usable road, that's just it's unfortunate that we only have one. Um, but that's just the topography that's, that's limiting and I see it more that it's already started. The, the, the challenge of only having one has been there for decades and as a private property owner, he can develop this property. And I'm not going to stop him from that. And I think he, it, John has presented us a plan that is going to beautify our community and especially up in that area of the community. It's a little different than downtown Frida, of course. Um, I think we get a lot of benefits. But and I, I do again, um, appreciate the community's concerns and I think that most of those will be dealt with appropriately through the administrative review process because there are um, codes and requirements that have to be met. They're not just going to rubber stamp this as it goes out. Um, but I think we've many heads have come together and a, a good plan is, is before us that um, that has dealt with a lot of things and tried the best he can do with the situation. And so I appreciate everything that staff and and uh, John's done with his development. And then again, community, I appreciate everything that they've said. Um, but I think we got a, a great product for our community. That's all I have.
Thanks, Aaron. I think Ken had.
I'll say mine for council reports on action. Sorry. Thank you.
Oh, it's not part of this?
It, it relates to the the process. All right. Yeah. So no, not about this.
Not about this. Okay. Um, does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, I'm going to move into mine then. Um, so I had a couple of things, I know. Staff probably knows how, we've been talking about updating Kingsview Road for approximately how long? I mean, I, I know that's been on the list for a while.
I'm not certain exactly how long it's been on the C I P, but I know it's been a part of the discussions for, for quite some time in our capital planning.
Okay. And then, so I'll, I'll ask staff this. So with this development going in, that could speed up some of that process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, we also have been talking about updating that lift station too. And so this would help with that upgrade as well.
That's in our proposed budget.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-four.
Of twenty twenty-four. All right. So that one we were going to do regardless of whether this development goes in, but if this development goes in, it would help with that road improvements.
Certainly.
Okay. Um, I want to ask John a question. So how long have you owned this property? Because I know that was brought up by Steve, so I just, I kind of want to just you know, I, I guess I want to hear how invested you've been in our community.
Oh, well, I've been.
You've got some beautiful products to show. Yeah.
But, but neither here nor there, we purchased this property in two thousand and four.
Okay.
We've started the development proposal on it uh, within a couple of years after that. And as I said, we withdrew it in two thousand and seven when the economy pretty much, where real estate uh, disappeared. So uh, we were gung ho at that point in time. We'd been through all of this public hearing we were ready to go and then everything kind of hit the skids. So, but we've been holding on to it. I think it's a good, personally, I think it's a good project. But that's my opinion.
I think John's being very humble too. He has brought us some of our most affordable and lovely products in Frida, like he really has. So I think that's important to note the history that he has in helping to build beautiful things in, in.
And not just price, but diversity of housing that relates to the, the pricing. But yeah, quite a bit of diverse.
All right. Does council have it? Because we have, so we have two things on our list. Our first one is zoning. And so um, does anybody have any questions about uh, the zoning change? Because that is the first item that we've got, that we need to vote on.
And council, as you um, start thinking about a, a motion on that, I'll just say for the, for the ordinance, I'd like to amend it um, to add findings, items one and three of the zoning criteria here up on the screen.
Adding that to the motion you're saying.
Adding that to the body of the ordinance as a finding, as findings.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I, I'd wanted to comment. John intrigued me when he was talking about the uh, emergency access and it would be uh, used by pedestrians as they're coming up. Just wanted to talk to you guys about, the other day we did the lagoon walk. And we had talked about Snooks being connected to the lagoons at some point too. So that if you really, if you visualize what he was just envisioning, where the people could come up and connect to that way, they could come up that way. And if we get through the project that we're talking about over there, the way we would, it would be able to pedestrian um, get up there too. That would as well, that would as well. So I just wanted to bring that up because that's another positive too. Um, how that would work, which eases my mind on that particular thing. But when he brought that up, it made me think of that, what we were talking about, the connection to Snook and Lagoons too. So.
Thanks, James. All right, I'm back to zoning. Does anybody have, have a motion for zoning?
There are going to be separate motions, is that?
There's going to be two separate motions because zoning is the first item.
I, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, second reading and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Frida by zoning approximately one hundred thirty-one acres of property located south of Snooks Bottom and west of the intersection of Kingsview Road and highway three forty to a planned unit development zone and approve the Sunset Point preliminary P, oh, yeah, is that right?
Not that last part.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Known as Sunset.
Known as, known as Sunset Point.
Then councillor Purser, did you want to add the um, the findings, one and three?
Yes, as you stated. Yes, please.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we've got a second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments related to this?
Would any sort of um, conditions on this, that would be part of the next one?
For the next one.
That's part of the actual.
Preliminary. Thank you. All right. Are there any questions or comments on this? All right, hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Councillor Williams?
No.
Councillor Cry?
Aye.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Hantsey?
Yes.
Councillor Bremen?
Yes.
And councillor Purser?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, with that, we're going to move into uh, the second item, which is the approval of a preliminary plan, the P U D for Sunset Point. Uh, does anybody have any further questions or comments, or do we have a motion on this item?
I just do want to say, yes, like I hope when we make this motion, that the, um, an egress plan and a pedestrian connection could be added to what else, what the already had as um, set requirements, which is a recommendation also. That would be my hope. Anybody else?
So, so Mr. Mayor, just, just real briefly, um, if I might add, maybe for the benefit of the, of the public that's here, some expectation setting on like what that would look like as far as like submittal documents and things of that nature. Is that something that the council would be interested in putting on the record? Because we could certainly go over that real briefly.
Yeah, so I think that would be good.
So after um, you've deliberated on the zoning and depending on the outcome of the preliminary plan, if approved, uh, the applicant would have to set up another pre-application meeting for uh, filing, you know, for a first filing or what would likely be, you know, one A and B, you know, in the filing plan. And they'll get a checklist and that checklist, our understanding of what the council has deliberated is that we're going to have an egress plan, but we're also going to have a traffic study that is for the entire preliminary plan. It's not going to be parsed out for individual filings. I, I, that's somewhat routine for us, but like, I think that's important to put on the record. So the applicant will then be required to go to C dot and provide a methodology for that traffic study that C dot will have to agree to. That like this is a reasonable way that you're going to actually conduct this traffic study and they agree to it. Once they get that agreed, they will start to, you know, do the counts and um, and perform that exercise. With that, submittal document will come, because the, some members of the public mentioned this, um, a, a geotech um, uh, and soil study and it'll be an investigation. It'll have pavement recommendations, you know, based off of the boring samples. It'll have foundation recommendations and it'll be parsed out into A, B and C, you know, and the recommended or, you know, the, the varying levels that, uh, that they can entertain as they, as they go to build houses. And then all of the, the, the engineering for all the road profiles that are pertained to the specific filings that are being uh, submitted, those will all go sequentially as it gets built out. So the level of detail submitted will be uh, immense and uh, and then the property owners that are in that area will still be notified in the same fashion that they were, although it will be a administrative process, not a public hearing process. But they'll be able to see that level of detail on our website with our application, which hopefully will quell some of the concerns. And and certainly if the egress plan is a part of that, that will also be made available for the residents.
With that, the notification on stuff, does that give them opportunity to make comments to you administratively?
Absolutely. They might not have access to a public hearing process, but they still have due process, the same way the applicant would, you know, through this um, through the, the administrative process.
Other questions or comments for staff? Or for Mr. Moyer?
No. Uh, city manager, uh, Mike Bennett mentioned also the review agencies will look at all of those um, uh, civil sets, you know, as a part of the review as well.
All right, then I'm looking for a motion if there's no other comments or questions on this item.
I move we uh, approve the Sunset Point preliminary P U D plan with the condition that all review comments are resolved with the final P U D plan application. And that an emergency access egress plan is developed pedestrian connectivity from three forty to Snooks Bottom and that a traffic study be conducted.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments related to this? Hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Councillor Cry?
Aye.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Hantsey?
Yes.
Councillor Bremen?
Yes.
Councillor Purser?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'd like to thank everyone for being here and uh, giving us input on this project. Uh, we do appreciate that. Uh, with that, we're going to move into our next item on our agenda. Oh, I get, I was asked, will you take a five minute break? So let's. So a meeting back at nine fifteen, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resume at nine fifteen.
I want to get six minutes. Oh, that clock's wrong.
Yeah, that clock.
Yeah.
You can come up closer if you want. We won't throw rocks at you.
Thank you, man, straight.
Thanks, sir.
I know you will.
Thank you for your service.
Well, it's already been a little two hours.
Not enough coffee yet.
Yeah.
That's a smaller coffee than.
Hi. Yes.
And you were ready to go, dude. You shut down, buddy.
He's the bladder. He lost the bladder.
Oh, God. Well, these guys totally know what they're doing. I'm just up here to.
So what'd you think about?
Reiterate.
Not too bad for an old guy.
I wasn't.
I was over five minutes faster than I wanted to be, so.
Yeah, man, that's tough on your layers.
Oh, I know. Good.
I, I didn't want. I, I didn't tell you.
Okay, good. That, I mean, I'm glad you can have that. Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it just gets funny.
Guys, that is the, uh.
Lot on the dinner.
Yeah.
And he's part of the Internet of Things, which is about three thousand.
Uh huh.
Normally, you're all, you know, it's this door.
Because they gather together?
Uh, they do join, you know. So if he doesn't like to be his.
Right, well, yeah, of course. So he can go. Um, I mean.
They came home on. Four hours meetings, right? So that's not bad, right? Oh, yeah, because that way you can focus and I'm like, oh, hey, we're doing. We bought what they call the box. It's a horseshoe shaped like padded ring.
Sounds also like a pretty.
Oh, yeah. It's some in it. Their head, their neck on that.
Those are some bigs.
A bottle of.
There you go. There you go.
You know, it's like.
Smart. Yeah.
But so we do that, so I could then sleep. We didn't know. She didn't even go to bed like at ten, but she'd like to. So it's not like, yeah, it's.
Right. You have to come back. Was he planning on coming home for the holidays?
It, it's not easy. And so it's like, it worked like pretty good because he was asleep. All little tricks.
Yeah.
To learn. So I was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I liked uh.
Yeah.
I'm glad I'm at work.
I'm like, well, that. I was like, I honestly like. He's like a couple hours of time.
No way. Uh, you, oh. I was gonna say you'd go crazy. Yeah.
That's why everyone keeps on telling me, I'm like.
You would have done what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, great. To be, I mean, be in conflict, in conflict.
Or whatever that passed. And that wasn't, that's not good, but not bad. It was slimy because you raised my.
There might have been some good.
They made it sound so shiny, like they made it.
Raise my taxes, then come back and say, I'll reduce your taxes for you. Let me keep your taper. Come on, don't be slimy.
All right, with that, uh, the time is nine fifteen and we're going to resume our meeting. Uh, so our next item on our agenda is um, our administrative agenda. We've got our twenty twenty-four budget presentation. We've got our assistant city manager Shannon Vassen here to present.
Your budget's so exciting.
We were saying that that's what the crowd was here for, like when we started the meeting, we were like, they're here for, they're here for budget.
These two are.
That remark.
All right, all right, let's get back in focus. All right, Shannon.
Yeah.
You're up.
I was telling councillor Miller, if we had two people in attendance, would have doubled our participation last time, so it would have been great. But we'll, we'll get there someday.
Second.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. We'll definitely get there someday. Um, as always, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for the opportunity to present. Uh, Shannon Vassen, Assistant City Manager for the city of Fruta. And um, for those that may be listening online or attendance here in person, this is the third of our fifth uh, formal presentations on the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Um, as is required by our city charter, um, at the end of September, our city manager presented the city manager's recommended budget to the council at the September workshop. At our last city council meeting on October seventeenth, we discussed capital projects. Um, and uh, our enterprise funds such as sewer irrigation and trash. And tonight we'll be discussing um, a strategic plan areas related to quality of place and personnel. And uh, next couple of meetings, touch base on economic health and development, give a budget overview, and the budget is slated to be adopted um, on December fifth. Uh, assuming all goes well. Um, there was uh, some potential changes to the budget calendar if proposition H H was going to pass, but it looks like that may not be the case. Uh, but we'll keep uh, we'll uh, is it, we'll keep an eye on that and report back to the council now.
I got a screenshot of it. I could be, there's a small chance I could be, I, it's, it's a picture of the TV with the yellow, the yellow check mark saying lose.
Let's get back on task here.
It's budget, it's budget.
Right, exactly, yeah. So tonight's presentation, again, we're talking about uh, areas in our strategic plan that focus on quality of place, community wellness. We'll kick it off with uh, going over budget highlights from the Fruta Community Center Fund, talk about our parks and rec, uh, general fund budget highlights. Briefly touch upon public safety and then dive into what we're doing with personnel and employee retention next year. Uh, so I'm going to kick it off with the Fruta Community Center Fund. Um, as this group knows, uh, the community center is funded through uh, user fees and tax revenues. Um, the community center was open twenty twelve, twenty eleven. Um, and at that time, uh, voters passed a one percent sales tax to fund the community center and it's been op in, in operation since then. Uh, good news, uh, we have visitor numbers through October and the FCC has seen some increased visitation compared to prior years. Um, through October, uh, the FCC has had a hundred and fifty-nine thousand visitors, which is trending ahead of last year's numbers. Uh, but slightly below twenty nineteen numbers, which is kind of always our benchmark uh, for the recreation center because we like to compare it to pre-COVID numbers. Um, especially in recreation centers. So last time I checked, we're only a couple hundred off of that, so that's super encouraging to see and super encouraging that uh, residents and guests are using the community center. Uh, overall highlights for the twenty twenty-four uh, community center budget, we have three point nine million dollars in revenues estimated. Um, again, it's, it's funded through a variety of different sources. We have a one percent sales and use tax uh, that can be used for operations and debt. Charges and services include things like the user fees, uh, whether it's daily or monthly user fees, but also when they rent out rooms, uh, charges for programming, et cetera. We also have some interest revenue in there and also there is a small subsidy from the general fund for the maintenance of the outdoor pool. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, revenues are expected to decrease two percent overall. Again, this is mostly due to one-time projects that were um, administered this year, such as the uh, replacement of the gym floor. If you remember early this year that are late last year that flooded, we got that full replacement. Um, so the insurance payments that we received for that decreases our revenues. Um, because we won't have those next year. And then we also received a small grant from the car out Department of Human Services um, for equipment for our dynamites program. So again, one-time revenues can only be used on one-time expenses. So even though our tax revenues are going up and our user fees are going up, overall revenues are decreasing slightly. Uh, new in the twenty twenty-four budget, we are proposing a one dollar pass increase. Um, so that will increase uh, the daily rate from seven to eight dollars and also some of our memberships. Um, uh, a dollar as well. We anticipate that this will um, raise around eighty thousand dollars in revenues for next year and we'll spend that mostly on capital. Um, as the facility has been open twelve, thirteen years, we're starting to see a lot of needs for replacement, especially of the fitness equipment, but a lot of the aquatics equipment as well. So we'll use this funding to help with capital and any other uh, operational facility needs uh, in next year's budget. This is the first increase since uh, twenty seventeen and kind of as our uh, costs have continued to rise, I think it's probably an appropriate time to do so because we've held off on this uh, for a while, but uh, with some needs coming up. I think it's a good time to uh, raise that rate. Uh, graph over here on the right is straight from the community center fund summary. Um, this just kind of details out revenues and compared to prior years as well. Um, blue is charges for services, gray is taxes, and then the other miscellaneous sources revenues as well. So we continue to see increased revenues. Um, but just slight decreases overall when compared to um, this year's actual expense or revenues. Uh, twenty twenty-four expenses, again, another slight decrease, uh, two percent overall compared to the estimated actuals at the end of this year. Uh, mostly just due to one-time expenses, gym floor, um, some of the facilities we got or some of the equipment we got for dynamites. We also have the water slide in this year's budget, um, which we will carry over at the beginning of the year. Um, but that's a project where they're finalizing the construction drawings. Um, they have someone who will be under contract. We went out to bid, got bids on that. So once they finalize construction drawings, they can award that contract. They'll probably um, construct in March, April timeframe. Uh, so one of those expenses is included in this year's budget, but uh, will be carried over into the next year.
And Shannon, if I could just add, uh, mayor, members of council, I, that process is, is uh, taking a little bit more time, but uh, for good reason. Uh, it was because it was a, the slide was originally engineered out of the original project. Um, we've had to be very careful and not uh, working with the, the construction company and looking at the as-built. Uh, making sure, because once that was removed, we have to make sure what are the pieces that are in place or not in place without any assumptions that then cause some larger expense later when we're into construction and then realize, oh, when it was taken out, you know, this or this uh, wasn't actually put in. So they're, they're taking the time going through that and we appreciate that effort to make sure that we know exactly what needs to be constructed and added to make that uh, project complete.
Absolutely. And I actually have a uh, photo of the slide in an upcoming uh, upcoming slides and you can kind of see some of the work. I think most of the slide is actually outside of the building, so you're going to have to do some work on the walls over there. But yeah, it should be a great amenity uh, once it gets completed in early spring. Uh, definitely no glass allowed. Uh, general highlights for the Fruta Community Center Fund, when you look at personnel expenses, they are budgeted to increase uh, twenty-one percent over this year's budget. Um, that is just doing, that is due to a few updated cost allocations from some of our positions. Um, these positions were charged to maybe the general fund prior to, but since we've changed a few of the positions now, there's a a different uh, cost sharing split between the Fruta Community Center Fund and the general fund. Um, we also, or the staff over at the community center this year opened up a concession stand that's been very popular. So you'll see that um, concession uh, supplies for the concession stand. Um, expenses are budgeted to increase about sixty-five percent from twelve to twenty thousand. But also you'll see on our revenue side that they will increase as well because that's been pretty successful. Um, and it's been a, a, another added benefit to people visiting the community center overall. Uh, the two positions that have been reallocated, we have a marketing and communications coordinator who we brought on a couple months ago. He's been doing great. He does all of our parks and rec communications, but also our community center communications. Um, that one was in special events, but now that's in FCC administration. And then our parks and rec department, we did a fifty-fifty split for the director from general fund to the FCC. So same cost, but just spread out a little bit differently to accurately reflect the time they spend. Um, capital expenses, it's always our goal as a city to spend at least ten percent of current year revenues on uh, capital expenses, whether it's in the general fund or um, our other funds like sewer and the Fruta Community Center. Um, we have nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside in capital expenses next year. Um, for that is, that includes a replacement of the indoor-outdoor pool heater at a hundred thousand. Chemical controllers, we have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted. We have miscellaneous fitness equipment that needs to be replaced. It's kind of ending or it's kind of nearing its uh, end of life. Uh, so sixty thousand dollars for that, water softener fifteen thousand. Um, security upgrades, thirty thousand, and then office expansions, which will help accommodate the slider, uh, renovating the aquatics area and also some of the rooms behind the aquatics area to help accommodate the slide. So that's about seven hundred thousand dollars to help with staff and the increase uh, staffing we have over there with both pools in the slide. Uh, again, this is kind of a picture of the water slide and uh, what's taking a little bit is just finalizing these construction drawings and kind of uh, getting them ready uh, for construction. So again, this should be done very soon. Uh, Parks and Rec Department has been working with the um, contractor who submitted a bid to finalize these, but also make sure we're kind of accounting for everything we need to, one, you know, putting this on the outside of the building and also accommodating this. Uh, but yeah, uh, current timeline, we estimate they'll open in early twenty twenty-four or construction will take place in early twenty twenty-four and open in March and April.
And the landing zone are both inside, correct?
Yeah.
Or and and inside.
Yeah, this is a good photo. Mark shared this at our supervisor training, so I'm going to steal this from him. All of this line is inside and everything to the right of it is outside. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah. So should be great amenity. Um, so yeah, looking forward to that opening in the spring.
Reconditioned to sunbake.
There you go.
Northeast corner of the building, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did select a insulated flume for the water slide. Um, due to the uh, it running year round, so.
Yeah.
No. That actually.
Does that affect the um, sorry. When we're obviously doing the construction, the pool's going to have to be shut down for a while and all that stuff. What's, what are we looking at?
We'll wait on that, Mark.
So we have been working with the contractor on keeping the pool open as much as possible, so um, there will be some night working and on work, on weekends to accommodate the pool times. So he, he understands the the use of the pool and how many people are there all the time. And so we're, we're trying to figure out a schedule that will work with that, so. Um, there will be some closures inside. I mean, we do have to remove some of the pool deck to get the spiral stairs and some of the drainage um, installed. So there will be some disruption, but he's trying to minimize that timeline.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Um, that actually concludes my budget highlights on the community center fund, so just want to stop here and pause for any questions. Um, before we move into parks and recreation and then public safety, if anyone has any. Sure.
Are we starting to look at the impact of the Grand Junction Rec Center and how much that's going to negatively impact our um, service charges?
Uh, as far as like our user fees and whatnot, yeah, we've had discussions on that. We have a pretty good demographic information of who uses the facility. Um, and I think we do have people that travel to um, the recreation center from Grand Junction. It's a ten, twenty percent as far as past sales, so we do anticipate some impact. Um, we never really quite know until you see kind of once the facility opens and I still work, we're still probably a few uh, years away from that, but it will be interesting to see, but right now. Um, we do have a high usage in the lower valley, Fruta, Loma Mac, but also we do see people that come and commute. And we even had people commuting for the pools. I mean, we had teams coming over here across the valley. Um, but yeah, right now, it's all estimates of what that could look like, right?
Uh, uh, on the flip side, we're, we're hoping that the timing helps with the overcrowding at certain times at the community center, so. Would be a good. I don't know if it's an exact, uh, you know, balance, but um, it, we're, we're actually not. Well, yes, revenues would go down with, with, you know, less if, if we lost some of those uh, people. We're also getting closer and closer to being forced for expansions, which comes, you know, are pretty dramatic costs while we're still paying off the debt for the current facility. So we're actually looking at it. Um, the twenty percent, if I remember right, and Mark, feel free to correct me wrong or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's kind of taking, it's hard to say that, uh, you know, that, that's all outside of, of Fruta. I mean, it takes in Redlands, takes in uh, Grand Junction, all the different areas of Grand Junction. So um, we could still see, it's not to say we, we plan to lose all uh, because of that. Um, but uh, we definitely plan to see that, that those ongoing passes decrease. We're just hoping that's going to help off balance the, the demand we're trying to.
Even know where they're building there.
It's Magic Park is, so it's on, it's, it's definitely not on this side.
Or is it?
Clifton and, oh, so that, that will help us to drop just a little bit, not so much.
We also have to keep in mind that our construction of new homes is bringing in people as well.
Well, and that goes to my, my next point that like, really what we're saying is if we didn't raise the rates by a dollar and you're saying that we're going to estimate eighty thousand on increase, our charges for services are flat. Uh, from this year or from estimated?
From estimated to, to budget.
I do anticipate that they are increasing. Let me pull up my budget here.
Is that's a?
Oh, yeah.
Seventy thousand dollar increase that you're showing, so you're really, you're showing that we're, we're losing, if we didn't raise fees, we'd be losing ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and we tend to budget pretty conservatively. Um, so kind of with some of the other things that we're seeing, I, we haven't got back to where we were twenty nineteen levels. Now that we have like attendance levels that are pretty close to it, it's pretty, um, it, it, it's pretty encouraging, but yeah, every time we looking at those user fees, we're shooting for hopefully nine hundred and seventy-five thousand next year, but let me just pull up and see what I have in there real quick. I think everyone can see this. Oh, yeah, so we do have, so nine hundred and seventy thousand is what we'll estimate and right here, this line item passes daily admission. Oh yeah, so we do have, so nine hundred and seventy thousand is what we'll estimate. And right here, this line item passes daily admission. It goes up to almost one point one. Yeah, so.
Something else is decreasing then, because you got a ninety there.
Yeah, nine percent increase on that.
Ninety thousand dollar.
Oh, yeah, no.
So the program registration fee you're expecting to drop.
Yeah, and again, these are kind of estimates. I usually pull these kind of where we're at in the year, kind of looking at what programs we have already and kind of estimate based upon prior years. So if we were to pull these in August, look at how those ended up prior years, the last four months and try to accurately try to calculate. But the end of day, it's all an estimate. Sometimes we'll also adjust for inflation. So you'll see maybe four or five percentage points on top of that, just because. As people are going to community center, as our costs have went up, they kind of factor that into the revenues that we see.
Two more questions. Of course, uh, so you're saying when you, the goal is to spend ten percent of revenues, that, that's a fund that you're building up over time.
Right. Yeah, so current year revenues and you'll see that in this fund, uh, the general fund. And a few others, we are actually spending out of fund balance, um, which is our goal. Especially in the general fund, we've been putting away um, uh, funding for capital projects and maintenance for a number of years. So that helps us. So when we do have some of these large projects, we can pay for cash instead of having to worry about going out to debt or bonding, anything like that. But yeah. The two projects, the water slide project and the office renovation project are almost all exclusively paid for out of fund balance. Some money that we've been able to save up, whether expenses were lower than we budgeted or revenues were higher, which they have been for about six years now. We've been able to put that in the bank and uh pay cash for some of these projects, which has been great.
So you're, so. If you look at the twenty three estimated of one point three four nine capital for twenty three estimated. That, that, the, most of that is gonna be rolled over out of that bucket right there.
Uh, the funding for the slide, which I think we put eight hundred and fifty, yeah.
But that's where we pull from.
Yep.
Last question is with the. Just elaborate more on the office expansion or what, that project?
Yeah, yeah. So with the new slide coming in, um, it's going to impact. So we have an office back there, kind of like by the boilers. The heaters. Mark, do you want to answer this one? I feel like maybe you're.
Yeah, so Eric Alberg, our uh maintenance man, um, there at the community center. It's taking his office. So pumps, um, heaters, it's gonna take that space away from him. So what we're doing is expanding off of the guard office and going to the east. That is allowing a couple of staff offices. It's allowing um office space for Eric and then storage um for chemicals. So currently we don't have enough storage for the acid uh tablets and the chlorine tablets. And so this expansion that's going on back there is going to accommodate these uh additional areas. With the expansion, we're also going to put some new HVAC. If you've been in the pump room area during the summer, when all the pumps are running, it, it is so hot. Uh, electronics don't operate um above ninety degrees properly. And so there's a lot of uh failures to some of the systems. Due to the extreme heat. So we're adding some of that conditioned air into the space, hopefully prolonging. Some of the maintenance uh on that equipment, so.
So that's gonna happen, that, that build out's gonna be on the east side of the pool.
Yeah, so um, just south of where the pump room is now. North of the, the existing pool area, so. Or the outdoor pool, I'm sorry. So kind of where that gate is and that uh.
Guards.
Right, yeah. Yep. So what we're, i- it's gonna be nice to have uh the maintenance room and storage area right there, where when we get deliveries. Off of trucks, we'll have a garage door that Eric could then use a pallet jack to move that, the chemicals in there and have access. Right now, we currently have to get all of our staff to unload those buckets um and, and take them in. So there's not really a, a good spot to, to move that or store that. So. Uh, just trying to get into better compliance with, with some of the new regulations and with those chemicals.
Thank you. Other questions on community center fund before moving on?
All right, let's move on.
All right, same done.
Just real quick, I do have a meeting on uh next Tuesday with Councilman Hunseker and Dare Case uh contractors. To finalize the design for the plan. So I, I provided them with as built. So we. There is gonna be a few um exploratory. Looking for those peers inside the, the community center in the pool area. But we should be finalized on everything else. So we found all the peer locations on the outside of the building. So. That should be finalized on Tuesday and we should have final numbers uh from the contractor to move forward with that project. So we should be under contract soon.
Great. Um, moving on to uh Parks and Recreation Budget Highlights. So this is our general fund, Parks and Recreation. Just wanted to touch upon some uh notable budget changes and I kind of caveat this with, uh, caveat this. With that, um, this could change as well. So we do have our first uh hearing on the budget. Um, at our next meeting. After that, the council can uh change uh up to less than five percent or else it'd require an additional public hearing. But some of these numbers may change, and this is just based upon the draft that you've been providing. It's also on our website as well. We do have increased funding for entertainment next year. This reflects the additional seventy five hundred dollars that the council. Approved for entertainment at Thursday Night Concert Series this year and also a few extra thousand for the micro events um that we talked about. Counselor Williams and I did uh have an FTAG meeting last month. And we did talk about doing a winter concert series with uh the tourism fund and they were all very supportive of that. So you'll see in our next budget draft, um, that we have a thousand bucks for our winter concert series. Paid for out of our marketing promotion budget. Like the FCC, we also have some capital equipment needs in the general fund. We keep on running into issues with irrigation filters and pumps at some of our parks. So we've budgeted sixty five thousand dollars in equipment um for irrigation replacements at Heritage Park and Prospector Park. And uh, we also need to replace the Mike Thelis chicken costume, which is budgeted as ten thousand dollars. We. I think we had a quote from last year that was around seven or eight, because it's all handmade, all that. So we'll get an updated number. That's kind of a placeholder for that now.
Sorry, but is that gonna be a, a cool upgrade like the, the high school one?
That was a huge.
That upgrade is massive.
I've, I've not seen the upgrade, but I believe it should.
Oh, it's great.
Pretty significant, yeah.
The new mascot for the high schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice. I mean, not that Mike's not cool now, but hopefully there is a.
We receive.
Save us money, I know.
We receive bids anywhere from five thousand up to fifteen thousand dollars for those. And the more, the higher they have the self cooling inside and, and different, um, so. Our mic costume does not have any fans or cooling mechanisms and it's very hot during the summer, so.
Sure smells wonderful.
Yeah, the self cooling in the summer.
I can attest to the stench of the, the last uh Wildcat. So that, that's, that's definitely something that needs.
Well, and they're still using it. It still comes out. So.
Oh, yeah.
One's still usable at some point, or was that just gonna be retired?
Uh, I think it'll be retired. It's pretty much due for replacement. Um, they asked, I mean, this is one thing that's been kind of on the books for the last couple of years. We had a few other things come up. So I think next year is probably the time to replace it and it should be good.
Or a retirement ceremony.
Case or something somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We definitely, definitely could do that. Um. We hope to have.
On GovDills and it say it smells like a headless chicken.
Other capital equipment, we have twenty five hundred dollars for replacement of soccer nets. Um, and that kind of um. Uh, is the bulk of the capital equipment for parks next year. Due to the cost allocation that I was talking about, uh, for the fruit of community center fund, personnel expenses are going to slightly decrease next year in our general fund. And overall, the budget for parks is expected to decrease again, uh, slightly, only a two percent change overall. Um, we do have a number of capital projects related to parks included in the budget next year. Although this one didn't make it into our last presentation because it's not necessarily capital project, but just equipment. We did, we did set aside uh thirty five thousand dollars for amenities at the Fruta Bark Park. So some benches, dog agility stations, uh, things that our Parks and Rec staff are working on, including uh next year. Uh, we did talk about uh some of the other projects. We have a uh vault toilet to be installed at Snook's Bottom to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then also with grant funding from the multimodal mitigation option funds and riverfront trail funding. We're going to design the um, uh, Carl River Front Trail underpass at Highway three forty. Um, and the Carl River to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for that next year. Uh, the biggest project that we have for parks and one that we've been talking about for a while, and we did talk at our workshop about. Is the Reed Park renovation. Um, again, the bid did come over the budget that we have uh appropriated for the project. So we have a supplemental budget amendment that will be going to you at our next meeting on the twenty first. We were short quite a bit by the time you factor in other expenses that we paid for separately, like the playground equipment, which you see up here. The mini pitch we played for separately, um, one of the shelters we did as well. So we are trying to figure out the best way to fund that from all of our monies that are designated just for parks, rec or open space. So you'll see that on the twenty first, the uh budget amendment to appropriate. The bid?
Yeah, we originally, the entire project.
Yeah.
One point six, now it's two point one.
Two point one, yep, yep. Uh, by the time.
Like tell us prices and they. That far off?
No, no, I, I, I think.
It's part of like the.
Yeah.
This year, the design that we paid for was completed before we made the estimate in this year's budget. So we made a budget estimate before having designed. Budget as, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's just time.
So, yeah, so that's why kind of in a, a couple of other meetings, I've kind of been laying the groundwork, like it's gonna be higher. Cause once the design was complete, we knew it would be higher. Uh, we didn't know how much. Um, we are, when we bring that amendment, we'll, we'll detail it out. But we're, we're gonna utilize close to four hundred thousand in ARPA funds that we did not have to use on other projects that we thought that. So that, those were the, so that'll help. And then, and then we have just under four hundred thousand in what, what's called uh CTF funds. So those are for uh, I'm, I'm forgetting the.
Yeah, parks, open space, conservation trust funds are from lottery proceeds.
Yeah, so we can only use it for that. So, so those two things are gonna help dramatically and that, or reduce the amount from the general fund that we have to write up. So we don't have to go, we don't have to bridge the whole gap with general fund.
Were we expecting to use those? Were we expect, in the, when we were estimating the one point six, were we hope, were we using those two sources? That was not in the picture.
No.
Oh, there was some.
We, we had some CTF.
Yeah, we had some and you'll see that um reflected in the budget, but.
Not ARPA.
The four hundred ARPA is just.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Lucky gravy, whatever.
And then CTF, the, our reasoning there is we receive a certain amount each year. Um, we'd rather spend that down first than hit the general fund because it's, it's, it's money only for parks and recreation.
Yeah.
So um, we try to keep a balance in there, but when we have a dramatic increase like this, we'd rather spend it down. And then let it start replenishing for smaller, you know, either match, ma- match for grants or other, other parks and rec projects. So. We'll bring that at like, um, at the, uh, as Shannon mentioned on the, I think it's on the. Twenty first, not seventeenth, but the.
All right, my apologies, that's twenty first.
But yeah, our next, our next meeting.
So, but, that's Mike, those funds that we're gonna, that we're looking at covering that, were they earmarked for anything else? Or were we hoping, are they, are we pulling it from other things?
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not taking it from anything that they were earmarked for already, if that's, is that a good way to put it? Now, there's other, you know, there's always other things we could put it to in the future, but.
We're not robbing.
Yeah.
Peter to PayPal.
I think, I think just kind of the feedback I've gotten from you all and, and the way we've been looking at it, it's been such a long term project to get Reed Park done. And lots of community somewhat promises that uh we really feel like, you know, it makes sense to, we've put. Pretty much all of our ARPA funds have gone to sewer projects and, and a little bit to the broadband project. So. We've had some savings with some of those, or we have, we've, you know, we have some, so we have about just, I think it's, is it four hundred thousand? And uh, so we, we feel like it's a good use to, with this, knowing. We've been looking because we, we knew it was gonna be higher. Now we kind of have a finalized, they're still working on a couple of smaller amounts. We are trying to get everything executed quickly because I think I mentioned to you all at the, at the workshop that. Uh, skate parks are like, uh, there's only a few construction companies. The contractor that we are awarding the bid to, they have their subcontractor for the skate park. And they've all been telling us they're twelve to eighteen months out. So I think I mentioned at the workshop that we were thinking. You know, gosh, that, you know, we might have to do everything but the skate park and that'll take a long time. In recent communications. There's a good chance that they'll be ready to start the skate park in June. So we're trying to get, but we have to lock it in and, and move. So we're trying to get all that locked in as, as well as the playground. We're, we're placing the order on that. Uh, immediately because the prices go up next month. So we're trying to, we're just trying to lock everything down and get this amendment through. So that we can have it all scheduled and actually be in construction next year at the same time we had hoped to be in construction this year. I mean, when it really comes down to.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Great. That's all I got for Parks and Rec. Um, for quality of place, we do always include uh highlights from our police department. They are definitely pretty easy over there, not much to um discuss as far as budget highlights. Um, a few that I pulled out just for this presentation, we do have to increase our funding for the nine on one communication centers by a little over ten percent. Currently, we pay three hundred thousand dollars for that. Um, but uh, the comm center has requested an increase of forty thousand dollars from us. And we fund that mostly with our uh county sales tax that's designated for public safety. It also helps offset the cost of one of our officers and a partial cost of one of our other officers. Um, we continue to cycle in and out, uh, police interceptors. So earlier this year, the council did approve us uh to. Order two police interceptors that will be delivered in November twenty twenty four. So thank you. I'm pretty sure we got those on order. It might actually be November twenty twenty five now I think about it, but next year, um, we'll have the funding to order another one. We're also ordering two GTAC tablets uh to the tune of thirteen thousand five hundred. And overall, expenses are budgeted to increase seven percent for the police department as a whole. Of course, yeah. Twenty first, yeah, yeah, yeah. My apologies. Yep, yep. Don't want to meet on a Friday? Come on, it could be fun. Nah, yeah, my, I think last year maybe our second meeting was on November seventeenth, so.
You just wanted to point out, you made a mistake.
Yeah, that's okay. It happens. Yeah, it definitely does. Um. Before I go on personnel, employee retention, I will stop there in case there's any questions from the council. And the next one will be three.
All right, I'm not hearing any, let's.
Great. Uh, so personnel and employee retention. Um, one of the goals in our strategic plan is to be. An employer of choice and to continue to invest in our employees because they are our greatest asset for core service delivery. They're the ones out there hanging up the Christmas lights. They are patrolling our streets, holiday lights. Second one, holiday lights, patrolling our streets, um, you know, patching any potholes out there, et cetera. So we want to continue to make investments in our employees because we definitely need them to provide all of our core services. This is straight from the all fund summary. Our personnel expenses are budgeted to increase nine percent from the twenty twenty three budget. Out of this, eight percent is roughly for uh salary increases for uh full time and part time staff. Um, and then the additional one percent is from new positions or reclassifications of existing positions. You'll see when compared to actuals from this year, that's about eleven percent increase, mostly because we always don't. We don't always spend all of the money we set aside for personnel. We'll have vacancies throughout the year, et cetera. So some of those positions will be lower than benefits. It's a ten percent increase uh from actuals compared to budget. Overall, personnel expenses make up fifty eight percent of our operating expenses. Generally, municipal governments, you see anywhere from like fifty to sometimes even eighty percent. So I think this is a, this is a good number and uh, yeah. The rest is capital and debt. Next year, continuing our implementation of the market based pay plan. Each year, we get survey data from the Carolina Municipal League that outlines uh the uh market rate for all of our positions. Each year we get survey data from the current municipal league that outlines the market rate for all of our positions. This year that increased eight and a half percent. So we are recommending a eight percent increase for full-time and part-time staff. The other half percent will be used for employees that earn exceeds expectation to receive a one-time bonus at the start of the year. We do have a number of new positions, including the twenty twenty four budget. The first one is kind of a new position. It's kind of just a change of existing one. I have budgeted a finance manager to hopefully start in April. In June, our finance director is scheduled to retire, so I'm hoping that we get at least two months of overlaps between the new finance manager and our existing finance director. So I think it'd be really beneficial for the new person to learn as much as they can from her before she goes on to retirement. So you'll see an increase in our finance salaries for that reason. I want there to be some overlap, some training. Cause when you've had someone in that position for so long, it definitely helps to learn from them. We also have a procurement contract specialist included in the twenty twenty four budget. This is one of those positions that I think will actually save us money in the long run because they'll be kind of focused only on purchasing and buying. So I think, you know, if that's their sole focus, they can probably negotiate better deals for us. You know, just focus on that and how we can cut costs and, you know, and efficient and still a good manner. We did have this position two years ago, we filled it. Unfortunately, it didn't work out at that time, but we'd like to revisit it because we think this is definitely a need that'll make us more efficient as an organization and also, yeah, make it our procurement process, hopefully more cost effective as well. Human resource analysts, we have an HR department of one for about eighty full-time employees and over a hundred part-time employees. So this position will help the human resources department with day-to-day human resource work. And as we continue to see, we are required to do more and more as far as like human resources, investigative reporting, stuff like that. So that's kind of takes away from our ability to focus on all those day-to-days. So that position will help with that. We also have two reclassifications of existing positions. So in both our public works department and our parks and rec department, we have seasonal and part-time employees. For next year, our department directors have requested that we convert two of those positions to a full-time to help with recruitment. We are not immune to some of the struggling or to some of the struggles that other organizations are facing. It's very hard to recruit for some of these positions. So we hope that converting them to full-time will help. And they actually decrease our costs overall for the positions because instead of paying sixty, seventy thousand dollars for a new employee, by the time you add benefits, fringe benefits, payroll taxes, et cetera, you're only paying the difference between the two. We anticipate that the cost, it always depends on what they elect for benefits, health insurance, they'll be between twelve and twenty-five thousand dollars overall. Benefit changes, we have been very fortunate in the past to where we received pretty low increases on the cost of our benefits. Last year, I think our health insurance increased by three percent and our dental insurance didn't increase at all. This year, we're seeing a little bit more changes. We have a six and a half percent increase for health insurance. And our dental insurance rates are going up five percent. So when you look at the budget, you'll see for those two, it's usually six and six to seven percent overall change. Picture the right, we actually create a benefits guide this year, which I think has been a good addition as people are looking maybe for positions in Fruta. They can see what benefits we offer in a super easy and readable way to do so. So I think that's been a benefit for that. And yeah, we have a ton of great benefits as part of our insurance and we hope that'll help us with recruitment in the future as well. And no changes to city's retirement, city contributes four and a half percent to employer retirement plans for non-sworn personnel, which is the majority for sworn. We do do more just because they don't pay for FICA. So we put that into their retirement on top of four and a half percent. So they get twelve plus some of the other ones. And we also started in two years ago, if an employer contributes at least one and a half percent to five twenty-nine, or sorry, not five twenty-nine, four fifty-seven. We will also match that up to one and a half percent as well. Mr. Mayor's counsel actually concludes my presentation, but always happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I do.
All right.
Go. No. Already went first.
Go ahead, Matt.
Go, Matt.
All right, fine, whatever. So as we look at this, have we looked at bringing in those consulting firms that work specifically with municipalities to go over grants that have been used to see if there's any money left on the table?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've talked about this pretty extensively, especially as some of the recent federal programs have come out, IJA, IRA, et cetera. So it's something we're definitely interested in as part of the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. The state actually allocated a hundred thousand dollars to the economic development district. So our economic development district is AGNC to hire a grants coordinator. So AGNC has since hired that grants coordinator. We haven't got to work with him yet, but I look forward to working with them, but they're just trying to understand all of the grants that are currently available. But that's something we could use. We have talked about maybe setting aside some dollars to help contracted grant writing, but also just kind of finding opportunities that may fit best for us.
Yeah, I think, I think you're talking about, we have, we have had those firms, they're of course prevalent through like ICMA or at those conferences and, and reaching out. Some of them don't necessarily charge anything except for they, they keep a percentage. We, we've, we've done that. I can't remember when, but we've done it before. Well, I know when I first started here, I think there'd been a recent completion. So it's something, it's something we can easily, it's something that comes up on a regular basis and then we kind of, we've, we've vetted some of those groups depending on. There was a trend for a while. It was like utilities and right now the trend is the grants because there's so many, so many of those out there. So we don't, I, I guess the short answer is we don't have one lined up or we're, we're working on it at the moment, but it is something we, we get marketed about and have considered.
If it's all right with you, I'll send you an email of introduction to a group that does it based on a percentage.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
It's free money.
Great.
That was it.
Great.
This one's kind of a side note before I get back to the personnel. Fines and assessments are nearly doubling from. I guess it's going up thirty, forty percent from historical. We're going to four hundred thousand, where we're estimating this year one fifty. What's the back?
Which?
I'm on page twenty-three just of your overalls.
Fines and assessments, I have to see.
Which page, Aaron? Sorry.
Page twenty-three. The doc, the actual document page from three, I don't know what it is, PDF.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
It's usually like two offs. It's twenty-five.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Let me scroll down to see. I tried to.
It's your, the summary of all funds budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
That beautiful.
Here it is. Yeah. So it's, it's kind of interesting how we classify certain revenues. So development impact fees are not technically revenues until we use them. They're deferred revenues. So under our categories of, of revenues, they're considered fines and assessments. So we have between Reed Park, Nineteen Road and also oh, the railroad, we are using development impact fees. So when you see the increase out of that, three seventy-one, about three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars is for capital projects. And you can see that in.
How many are you on on that?
Twenty-seven. So for each category of revenues, I try to provide an explanation of that. So just scroll down just a little bit. And that should actually be, yeah, yeah. It's, it's one of those accounting things because they're not actually, we earn them their liabilities on the books until we spend them, but until we spend them, they're deferred revenues. So they, in our books, they're classified as fines and assessments category. And that should be all in the capital projects fund. So if I were to go to the revenues on that. Yeah, three seventy-one, seven hundred, I think. I can't remember. I want to say the majority of that's Nineteen Road. Then we have some for Reed Park and then some for the railroad crossing as well. Oh, yeah, of course.
So these questions come back to like what our, our very quick conversation the other day and.
Yeah.
We had to cut it off midway. So I guess I look at certain revenues, like pulling out intergovernmental stuff. Like there's, there's certain revenue streams that we're looking pretty flat.
Right.
And my question is, you know, I've, I've seen us add administrative new heads and typically those are, those are harder to come by to add because they're of the nature of the beast.
Right.
And we've added some the last couple of years and, and I see like the HR is a great one because you're probably understaffed for HR department, even with the new head. I believe HR needs some, one for every fifty to seventy or something.
Right.
So what's the, the long-term plan due of hiring administrative heads when we've done so much the last couple of years?
Yeah, I can take that. I mean, the, the, the plan has been something we've been working on for quite some time regarding. Oh, gosh, why, why am I forgetting the, the buzzword, the term, but as, as we're succession planning, as we've been planning for, we've talked about this a few times as, as a group, but with the finance director position also being the city clerk and also being purchasing and also being budget in the past and also.
Margaret was a hell of a bargain.
And also doing contracts. She does a, she does a fabulous job and, and has, was able to take on a lot of that over forty-two years, right, of kind of taking on. But in the last, I would say six to seven years, even as amazing as she is, and she would say this if she were here and we've talked about it, that's become very reactive and very not proactive in any of those areas. So we are not with her retirement, we've been, we've been making adjustments for a number of years, right? And we've been making adjustments not to just cover what we're doing, but cover what we're not doing that we need to be doing. So the biggest adjustment that you all have seen already was, was Shannon's role now overseeing administration and, and completely taking on budget. We're not hiring a finance director when we, we're not hiring the same positions. We're hiring a finance manager. It's paid at a lower level than the finance director. It reports to Shannon or, or they report to Shannon. And, and then with clerk pieces, Margaret does certain components of that. Deb takes on deputy city clerk, takes on a portion of what a city clerk would do in normal organization or in organizations like ours, such as what you typically see minutes, but she also does other things like business licensing and, and liquor licensing. And so from the clerk side, we, we obviously take care of the bare minimum, but we're, we're not proactive in some of the pretty intense requirements we have for document retention. It's not to say we're not doing it, but we could do it much better when we, and we're getting more and more public record requests. And we're finding that it's taking longer and longer to go through those. And we could, we can create better systems of, of retaining that information. That's just one example. And then, then the contracts piece and purchasing piece, we've tried to do that on the side with each, each department taking on a, a pretty big piece of it. And we're just finding that, again, we're struggling with the bare minimum and not, not going, going ahead. And so we've been planning, we've been planning for this for a number of years of like taking steps every, every one, every couple of years and planning for the retirement where we knew if we hadn't taken some of the steps, which is why you've seen a couple of administrative changes, then we'd be doing like, we'd have to do a bunch at, at once. And so it does seem administratively heavy. We definitely get, we definitely are super mindful of that because for years we, we did not do any administrative roles because we prioritized other positions like maintenance workers and other things like that. And with the support of the full organization and kind of planning those waves, we've been able to beef up, beef up those positions in the past. And then now with the increased revenues that we do have and with the plans for succession to kind of start implementing.
Or, or in the next future years, we really shouldn't see a whole lot of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
What you're saying to me is over the last few years, we've been planning, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
So that here in the little bit, or I guess you're saying that in twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't think.
We're, we're gonna start seeing this, see it drop back down.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna see a trend. I don't think we're gonna see a trend like last year and this year, like an every year type thing, right? It's, it's hard to say that we won't have no administrative positions, but we definitely relook at how we try to do a lot of restructuring when we have vacancies and openings. So a good example, like you saw with some of those shifts and Shan talked about the communications, you know, shifting and how we allocate to different funds and, and recreation. Some of those shifts were also that we used to have. We've taken positions in the past structure of like community center where we had, you know, a director and then the superintendent over the rec center where there were, we were starting to get a little top-heavy. And so we didn't replace, we, when that position left, we didn't replace that position, but we had, we broke up, you know, a lower, lower level supervisory positions to, to manage and we, and we have a trend of doing those. So I would say, you know, I can, I can think of maybe one area, one type of position administratively that potentially could be in the, in the future years. I don't know if it's twenty twenty-five and by any means, but I think we're, this is kind of our, you know, leveling back out for, for quite some.
And then, and that, and I appreciate that because that makes a lot more.
That makes it.
And typically you're growing per se direct labor a lot more than administrative labor.
Yeah.
It is that, that grows very, very slow compared to direct.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate that. Just two things. So just to reiterate what you were telling me, I think is good information, like this purchasing is gonna actually save us.
Yeah, I mean, I would think so. So the first time we hired the purchasing specialist, we actually brought in people from Grand Junction because they have a whole purchasing division. That's like what they do. And they said, you know, this position can be great because you have someone that's just solely dedicated to purchasing. You know, in a small organization like ours, sometimes we have to do a lot of things on the side. Like I think last time I was telling you about how, you know, on top of budget, top of all the administration stuffs, we're also looking for grants, applying for those. And doing our own purchasing, which is not a, it's not a bad thing. It's just having someone that could be dedicated just to that and kind of going out, being proactive with that, I think could benefit. And they tell us, you know, sometimes, you know, some of the savings they see are, are quite a bit. So, yeah, I think it'll be a good position in the long run, especially with how much purchasing we do as we've grown as an organization.
I think some of the proactivity can help. While some of it could save because we're looking at, you know, we could be more proactive with pickyback, pickybacking on other, you know, requests for proposals that governments have done and saving time, but also hopefully getting lower costs because we're, we're not just doing it ourselves and we're joining in with, with, whether it's through the state or through other entities in the valley and doing some joint. Some of it's gonna be realized and not necessarily saving money on, on the actual purchases, but saving the time. Right now, our de facto purchasing group is the engineering department that is barely keeping up with all the development review and all the capital projects. And so paying engineers to be our purchasing people has not been the most efficient way of doing it, right? The reason why they've become the de facto is because they, they, because they do so many capital projects and we don't have purchasing. They had to become experts at trying to do it. And then we have other departments that don't do it as often, like when it's these larger projects. This is, this is aside from like buying supply stuff. I'm talking about all the big purchasing we're doing and equipment and projects and things like that. So.
That will build capacity in that department.
So I don't want to, yeah.
Much more skilled position.
Exactly. So it's like savings, but it's efficiency too. And maybe, maybe being more mindful of who we're paying to do what, what pieces and aspects. And we will, I want engineering to be doing review, management of projects and designing engineers, right? Like, I don't want them messing with, I want them to be able to say, here's, here's the, here's the scope. And someone else takes it through the RFQ, RFQ or RFP process and any departments doing that. And we are doing, I mean, that's a consistent thing. I mean, I would say weekly, we're doing various levels of purchasing. That's not just your small level that you don't have to do a, I mean, we're, we're constantly getting quotes. We're constantly doing RFPs, RFQs, you know, so. So I don't, I, I don't want to say it's gonna, I, I might be a little more reserved on like, and what we're paying, are we gonna, are we automatically gonna save that much money? I mean, there could be years where we do. I, I see it more on the efficiency side too of who's doing what and, and let, and getting our experts focused on their expertise and not, yeah. As we're growing.
Last thing I would say is, you know, I would definitely would support more than a two-month overlap.
Right.
Tiring.
Right.
With my experiences, when you look, when you're looking to loot, right now you get the benefit of planning, losing your historical knowledge base. And I'm currently in one which we've lost it and I've figured it out and it sucks. And so I definitely support even more than two. And so I definitely support even more than two months. I'm, I, I. Put four months in the budget, I would support it as well because that's more the merrier because that's, it's not just fifteen years, it's what, forty something? So it's like, I definitely support even longer of an overlap than you have budgeted.
Right. I will, I will point out just, just for your information that. I didn't mention earlier, some of the steps that we've taken as well in preparing for her are some of the employees that report to Margaret right now. And so Krista, if, if you, if you've had the opportunity to meet Krista, she's taken on. Quite a few of the accounting duties preparation as well.
Oh, good.
So that role was once, it, it, we haven't, you, you, the council over the years hasn't seen it quite as like new positions. But it's, it's that position has evolved or grown into. Supervisory, the ability to be a supervisory role with some of the other like AP and payroll and things like that. So not only a backup, but she's doing our grants, she's doing quite a few of the functions that Margaret traditionally did. So with, with Shannon and Krista and then the, the other staff. There still needs to be overlap, but that takes the. Quite a few of the functions we've, we've started doing some, some where it's not only Margaret that's done it, right?
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you for.
Thank you.
For adding a lot of.
On a mint.
Any other questions for Shannon?
Uh, yes.
All right.
Sorry, I'm a little verklimmt. And, and I apologize if I've missed this in terms of long-term planning for facilities. Is there an opportunity to put in? Money to look at long-term planning for this building? As with the city continues to grow, what other facilities will need to expand upon? I know we've got, as council, we've thrown out all these ideas, we could do this, we could do that. But I don't feel like we have a plan for when end of life of building and stuff like that. And it would be great as we go into other discussions that, you know, are happening, feels like on a more regular basis. As we talk about potential land banking and repurposing, to have some sort of overarching plan that we're working towards.
Yeah, no, I agree. We didn't, we weren't at the point where we could actually. Without just putting a placeholder, figure out what the amount would be. But we have started engaging with groups that do that there are, and looking into some of the grant opportunities available to cover that. So, you know, we have for studies under a hundred thousand dollars, we can, we can easily get a Department of Local Affairs twenty-five thousand dollar grant. I mean, it, 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 the total study can't be over a hundred, but it's, it's, it's a very quick process to get a twenty-five thousand. We've done that with numerous studies, but there's other groups that actually. There's other models out there that Kimberly and I have talked to some of these firms that. It's just trying to sift through it. Some of them, there, there, there are groups within the state and partnerships that'll do some of that for free. But do we get, do we get quite, do we get quite of everything we're looking for? So we're, we're still trying to vet what the right approach would be. I don't necessarily want to wait till the twenty twenty-five budget if it's, if we get there with that. But I think between grants and if we had to come to you and say, here's the plan, we, we can get this grant, it's gonna take this match. We might not have to move much money, but something we could bring in. We just don't, we don't have that vetted out yet.
So it's not worth putting it as a line item stakeholder?
I mean, it, it. That never hurts. I just don't, we, we'd be really guessing at what that number is right now. That's my only. If, if you are okay with coming with more concrete information during the budget year with the potential with a grant and. You know, allocating funds or, or something like that, it might be a little. It, it might be a little more accurate than kind of our, our guess. And then it's a completely different number or something.
Yeah, in the past, whenever we've received grants, we can generally go to contingency. We set aside three hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. So that just goes on consent. We generally don't spend down that money. This year we're having a higher, so we might spend about a third of it, but that's usually a pretty easy process.
On that is if it's something, a line item in a budget is to get.
It, it does, it does. I mean, that's, that's, yeah. That's true.
Are you asking us?
All right. Do we want to put in a?
I'm just trying to figure out what you're asking.
So the question is, do we want to put in even if it's a zero dollar line item, but a some, a line item on this? Because it feels like we've got a lot more real property stuff coming up over the next, you know, two to three years. And I would like for the city to have a kind of something that we're working towards versus taking every instance as a one-off.
I don't see it hurting to have it as a line item. It's a zero line item. I don't like the idea of guestimating. Yeah, but I do like it being the one. Placeholder does make sense.
Yeah, I think we might have one. There's like a space needs assessments and public works. I'm pretty sure.
Zero is bad.
Dash is good.
Dash.
So we'll put a dash in for.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just saying.
Everyone's up there that have dashes.
It's zero.
Right there.
Represented by a dash. You're good. No, I like, I like that.
It's already in our public works, space needs assessment.
All right.
We could fund it if this group is interested.
Be a little faster on that next.
I'm gonna say this again, any other questions for Shannon? All right, hearing none, you better run quick.
Always appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Shannon.
Really a phenomenal job.
All right, all right, we're gonna move into, and I'm gonna ask like these next few sections, we try and move through quicker. Cause we have an executive session as well that may take a little more time. So city managers report, that's my, that's my hint, Mike.
Yeah, mayor.
Subtle.
Subtle like a freak.
I don't have anything assuming you're gonna cover the school board meeting.
Okay, I will do that during council reports. All right, with that, we'll move into council reports. Our first item is establishing a committee to review possible localism board. Is everybody good with getting that set up with the applicants that are in there?
Yeah, sounded like a pretty good mix.
Yeah. All right. So that one, do we need a?
One person on there.
Yeah. Do we need a motion for that one to set up a localism committee, Mike? We do. All right. Does, we want to make a motion to?
And remember, you can keep adding.
Right.
It's not like.
We don't have a.
More interest. Yeah.
I'm making a motion to set up that.
I moved to establish a localism committee.
And appoint the members.
And appoint the listed members as the committee thus far.
I can't.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Deb, would you please pull council?
We missed it. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
With your fancy.
Yes.
Counselor Brennan, Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry. Wish you pass a six zero.
Council reports and actions now. Who, I'll start since Mike already started with that. So I know some of you have been asking about the joint meeting with the school board. They've more or less made it apparent that there's not a possible way to have a whole meeting with the school board and our full council before they're making decisions. So we've set up a meeting on Thursday with Mike, myself, I've asked Matthew to join us. We've got Brian Hill, we've got, oh, who else is in that? I have to look it up. I know.
Andrea Heights and we have.
A couple more on their list.
Garcia, the COO, yeah. They, so they plan, just so you're aware, they, they, the school board will be voting on the boundary changes that affect Fruit of Monument High School. On November fourteenth, so next week, so Tuesday. They've already made the rec, they've already had the recommendation given to them by the, at a previous board meeting by the demographer. Which means, and that is to approve those boundary changes, which takes all students at Wingate and Appleton to go to Grand Junction High School. So essentially that means pretty much all of the Redlands will phase out and not come to Fruit of Monument High School anymore. So that, that decision will be voted on and on the fourteenth. So.
What we're asking is what, what does council want us to address? I know boundaries is one of them. And I think that's the main one.
And, and sorry.
Grade changes too.
Right. The grade, the grade reconfigurations will be voted on at their December meeting. And that, that is whether to do it next year or the year after. So they're doing it, but it's, is it start, does it start next school year or does it start this school year?
Wait, what were the two schools that you said would go there?
Uh, so Wing, Wingate Elementary and Appleton. So.
The rest of the Redlands.
And all the, so all the.
All of it's.
So would Redlands would beat into Junction now and we wouldn't get them at all?
Yeah. So they, they made a previous boundary change, what was that a year ago? And that took half the Redlands. This is basically the other half.
We wanted to make sure we hear concerns. I know Amy brought stuff up before about people buying, or you taught, when you were talking with me about buyers that purchased in certain parts of the valley.
I think. Yeah. I mean, the thing that I hear the most is that they choose Fruita because of our culture, not because of a building. I, that's, that's been the resounding comment that I've been hearing, you know, that, cause they keep getting told, well, you get to go to a new school. Like you get a new building and they're like, we don't care about the building. We care about the culture that, that we bought for. So I think it'll be really interesting. I know that our principal is focusing really hard on trying to. Accommodate as many school of choice. He's already anticipating an increase in that. So that'll be interesting to see.
Yeah.
There is only so much capacity with, you know, the grade config reconfiguration. So. But I think it is important to keep that in mind that he is, you know, that as an administration, they are gonna be trying really hard to accommodate as many of those.
And I, just so you all are aware, so when we tried to get the, the joint meeting, it was both timing. There was hesitancy to, to do a, a joint meeting. They didn't do a joint meeting with Grand Junction before East. There, I mean, there was a lot of things that they were kind of trying to go through. I'm not saying those are good excuses myself, but I'm just, that was the feedback.
They also weren't asked.
But the. Yeah. Right. But essentially, essentially they did not agree that, that, I mean, that sounds harsh, but they didn't, they didn't agree. And they suggested, hey, in the timing, we'll have our board chair. And if you can have your mayor, we'll have, and then, and then they said the board chair may choose one other person, the mayor can choose someone else. The mayor said that typically first goes to the mayor pro tem. So that's how we got, that's how we got to have in the meeting. And then, but keep in mind that a decision on the boundary changes still doesn't, that, that it's, it's, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. So if there's anything you want us to convey so that they're able to consider, and I, I mean that by, it sounds like all or nothing. But they also have to think about how the transition occurs, how school of choice occurs, all those types of things. So if there's anything you, as a council, you can let Matthew and Joel know what to convey. That they can say, this isn't just me, but our whole council is concerned about this and would like, like this to be taken under consideration. I think that's the feedback they need for Thursday's meeting.
And that, and that's the other thing we've done in the past too, is if we want to write a letter that's signed by council. Then again, that's a public record that shows that we're in, you know, we're supporting. Our stance on how, how we would like to see that. Now, whether they do that or not, that's another.
I have serious reservations about the communication piece of all of, of all of this. Last spring, when the surveys went out and they had pretty good, they had a much better response from the surveys than, than they did this time around by the public meetings. But those surveys were not worded at all in the way that it is now coming across. So what they thought they were gleaning from those, they've taken in and gone a whole different direction.
And this last survey was only sixty, I think I told you.
Well, and again, this last, if they sent a survey out this time around, it must have been to parents only of, of students, which is a big D. I mean, obviously that's the main focus, but there's a lot of other opinion and community culture and insight to take away. Than just the current parents that it's, it's affecting. And in regards to the reconfiguration, and I know that's already been decided. When the survey initially went out, it talked about not being able to do that because of capacity unless. There was a vote of the citizens. So that is how people answered was based on they were gonna have a voice. Um, to that decision. And now I guess with the, with the thought that the boundaries are gonna be approved, even though that hasn't happened. They're saying there's gonna be space, but it's tight, it's tight, tight without, without. A vote and adding funds like taxes to add on to these schools. Um, so I, I'm really concerned about how the communication went out from spring to now. And then to the people that it was communicated these more recent meetings. I just feel like that outreach was very poor and not, and that they, as you already mentioned, Mike, like based on. Numbers to those meetings that they had, like as a city, I know they operate differently, but like fifty-five people is not enough.
We couldn't make a decision.
Yeah, you couldn't make a, a decision or a recommendation on that kind of numbers. And I just feel like that, those pieces, in my opinion, and if you guys agree, are, are important to communicate and to reflect on before making the. It's a big deal recommendation. It's potentially devastating to the school on these boundary changes. So in, in a lot of ways, I, does it change our class at all? Like, do we go down a class? I would like to know the answer to that question. If we do.
It would be interesting.
You know, maybe than that, but in, in if we don't. Any, you know, it, it takes our, any chance, not any chance, but it takes the chance of being competitive in all things, not just sports, but in all things. It's putting us at a huge deficit. The timing to me also feels really odd and suspicious. I, I'm, I'm in favor of Grand Junction High, the new Grand Junction High School. Like I think that's good, but now it feels like. A push to fill it up, like to, to do something that's not natural to do. Just for the purpose of, of the school, of grand, of the new school being the school. And all of the, those are my personal concerns. I don't know what you guys.
I, I didn't even really think about that change. And I'm happy that you brought that up because that hurts our, our athletes.
And our arts.
And our.
Yeah, everything.
That's not.
Yeah. It's across the board.
Very negative. It, there's nothing positive about this for our tent whatsoever. And that's the problem is that we're not getting any, we're not getting anything out of this. We're just, yeah, at all. There's nothing that's good.
The ones who are being pulled from us are not.
They don't want.
Forty are not happy about it.
So we're, we're being, we're being hurt, but at the same time, the people that, that are, they don't want, that's not good for them either. So for us, it's a lose, lose. We're not doing good and our students aren't, it doesn't help our students. And what, at what, for what cost?
I'm hoping that that's, moving forward, like if this is the path that they're absolutely going on, I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll take the approach that they did with the initial. Boundary change where kids that are already in Fruita schools would continue like they're grandfathered in.
They have talked about.
So, I mean, that would be at least.
From what I've heard, it's very. If you don't have a kid that's.
Either in or a sibling that's in.
That's right.
But it's even a certain, to a certain grade.
Ninth grade.
What you're looking for.
Yeah.
Seventh graders.
Yeah.
Current seventh graders.
Oh.
That's what it was. It was.
Okay.
So.
Interesting.
That's gonna be a process if you let it be down. Do those of you that were on council recall, I was trying to remember this, but I, I remember when the bond that failed. There, we had a bond that failed that would, that was going to include an expansion of Fruit of Monument High School. And then we had a joint, we had a joint meeting, I believe, with the school board. And I feel like they came, or so they came to us, I don't remember if it was a joint meeting or, but I remember they came to like the council. And they asked for support and you guys did a support for Grand Junction High School bond. Remember that was, there was an official support for those of you that were on council at that time. And when they did that, they said, because if this passes, then we'll come back for expansions of, of bonds in the future for Fruita. Which would then help. which would then help reconfigure the grades, which goes back to what Janine was saying. Even in the spr- as recent as the spring, survey questions were were more geared towards that, like, you know, would you like to reconfigure, but keep in mind, we'd have to, we'd have to ask for more money to expand through to Monument High School. So this is within a short period of time and low, low participation, a shift. And I think that that'd be something to share with them. Um, of just stepping back only, you know, not that far, six months, you know, ish. Or was it spring of last year? Is that what, or was it longer? Are we talking like a year and a half ago or just this spring? I can't remember.
This past spring was the.
Okay, yeah.
And the meetings.
This was just a few months ago.
Yeah, that that's even worse.
Yeah.
I mean, highlights are more.
Um, it was before the end of the school year last.
Exactly, yeah.
I think on top of all this, that would be great to throw that seed in there is with the transition from moving the middle school up to the eight, nine school. There's some, there's some positives from having relationships with other entities on what are we going to do with that property in our community. So it's, it's more just having that, just a five, ten minute chat on that, just to plant the seed to make sure that they communicate with us. Um, because I think that would be a good joint effort. Um.
Yeah.
With what they want to do, so.
And and I I think we should emphasize that, uh, again, they have guaranteed it from a staff level, but I think it'd be good to share as well. And that does not mean that, again, that does not mean just the city takes it or like an all or nothing. I mean, East High School right now, um, I mean, we program through to middle school. We be in the community, like the city programs there, recreation programs programmed there. Uh, every other school programs there, uh, present, you know, I mean, that's where the bands perform, that's where the orchestras perform. Uh, that's where the choir perform. I mean, there's all these things. We've got practices happening on the fields. We have our basketball happening in the gym. So even when they closed East Middle School in Junction, the city still has agreements with them right now. It's the city does, City of Grand Junction doesn't own it, doesn't maintain it, but there's still like this programming is still occurring. So there's like the extremes of, you know, that can come up for those discussions and then there's everything in between as well. So uh, they have guaranteed that they will work with us on that, but that, I mean, you know, that will be part of those conversations. Our last meeting, they want to be, you know, want that to be from the start. Um, but uh, I think it'd be good to, I think it'd be good to convey that from the council, not just from staff.
Yeah, and in regards to expressing those concerns about your meeting, I also would be in in favor of an actual letter from the that goes into public record that 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 is submitted to the board to that.
Encapsulates that, yeah.
There, there's no uh, any other alternative ideas, right? They just have this on the table and that's what they want to run with.
That's what they've, that's what they've had, um, I think their staff or at at least the demographer has made the recommendation and then they're planning to vote on it, so.
I appreciate the demographer and I think he's done a fantastic job and I I value the district staff so much and and the school board and the hard decisions that they've had to make um, over this past year. But even the demographer, again, initially at his reports, especially about the Wing Gate um, boundary, said it multiple times that historically, um, those families are fruit of high school families and they are like their hearts are there, there's generations that this goes back to. And then that's, I'm, it's it, it's on video, it's on report that even though he was saying we could do this, he was very adamant about like, and that it wasn't necessary to be done.
That actually made me remember also that um, our programming, so they're pulling from two of our uh, two of the agricultural areas that have families that participate in our FFA programs. And that's part of the reasons that they, you know, chose the the school district that they did, because we're the only school district. We pull kids from Whitewater, well, you know, the the, so that I think that is important, that's important to consider as well, you know, that those, those families are not going to be served in the same way. It, the the new building does not matter if you don't have the.
Yes.
Yeah, sounds like a lot of reminding needs to be.
I think Blade Park is getting rezoned too, isn't it? Don't they go that, won't they be going there as well?
I think you're right, but I I don't.
I think that um, our principal mentioned that at the event yesterday that, cause I had, I didn't even realize that. Cause he was the one that pointed out that they, you know, they come specifically. Yeah.
It just seems like they're not diving. How this affects freedom whatsoever.
Oh, it goes back to sixty, sixty survey replies and most of those being si- employees, not the community.
Exactly, that was part of it too.
Got that screwed up email last week, um, that gave all those details as well.
Yeah, and again, that went to parents.
Well, and and at the meetings even, the largest attendance was staff, like the the, I attended, I attended two of those meetings and the majority were 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 fruit at, well, and that was awful, because they gave us like three days notice. Yeah. Communication was, it was horrible.
I tried to go to one and I couldn't make any.
Yeah.
Hmm, but.
Okay, I have notes. Thanks for representing us, guys.
I I would say the only, I think we've got a lot for the meeting Thursday. The challenge could be a letter from you all that needs to get to them before Tuesday. Um, uh, if I I think this is where you have to, if the group wants to do that, um, do we just take these notes and do you just trust that we, and the mayor gets his signature on there and it's approved by the council? I I I don't know if we're going to have a lot of back, we don't have, we don't have a.
I think you understand the spirit.
If it's what we're. Um.
I see the benefit of having a letter, but I.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, do we?
Had a good discussion for your Thursday meeting, but something between Thursday and Tuesday, that's additional that we're having.
Well, I've, oh, we do have a meeting on Monday.
We do. We could.
Nice, easy one.
Yeah, but we could, we could try to have some kind of draft and at least get it out to you and then um, and then get feedback at that Monday and then submit it on Tuesday. I mean, uh, uh, seems like, seems like our best option with the timeframe, so. Um, I'd be, I'd welcome, if 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 it's okay with the group, if any of you want to take some stabs at some of that, I'm. I I I heard a lot of this, some well spoken from Janine and Amy on kind of some of this historic pieces of the process that would be good. So if you, not to put it on you, but I that with the timeline, it'd be helpful. Especially after how Amy wrote that r- resolution.
All right, any other thing else? I I'm sorry, I said, let's be short and to the point, I did.
That definitely needed some time. That's a huge piece of our.
That's all I've got for myself. I'm going to start down on this end this time, because Matthew started, Aaron.
Um. Have we talked to the museum about moving their trailers? They have not. I drove by there a couple of days ago and they have not done anything. Yeah, Mark keeps following up with them and they keep saying we're working on it.
I know, I know they have a lot.
Have hitches.
We'll just bring a couple of trucks over there.
I'll just tell you, so I'll just tell you this.
My deadline?
Last three weeks. Update to me has been the same and it's not on him. He's keeps following up with them and they haven't done it. When for the dog park, we moved him. I mean, Mark went and moved him, so.
Maybe that's what we need to offer, because I I know they're struggling with with leadership right now, because they're down a director. Um, so it might be that we need to just.
It might just, I think they they rely on volunteers or people to come move them or something to that.
It'd be nice to have it done by Thanksgiving before we see influx.
People, people can't be joining them.
Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, Amy.
Um, I wanted to just go on record and say that I was really displeased with the vandalism that happened of the new concrete at Dinosaur Hill. And uh, I caught a little bit of flack for being very unhappy about it. Um, but I want everybody to know that I'm holding our community to higher standards than that. And and vandalizing brand new concrete on public property is, and private property, is absolutely inappropriate. Um, I missed our uh, historic preservation meeting. Um, we did have some, I I had a few phone calls about the Red Barn property. Um, so hopefully that Red Barn is going to be staying up as they are saying it will right now. But um, I don't know if you guys got any outreach about that. They demolished the the house on the original cabin. Um, so everybody was really concerned that the barn might be next. Um, so just a little.
That whole property for sale, right?
It's old.
It's old, so that's, that's why it.
Oh, God, don't start that rumor. It should not be. We don't.
I just always assume that that's what.
We don't, we don't have any plans submitted as of yet, right, Dan?
Let's not start any rumors, all right?
Uh, the tourism social media site corrected eighteen road and actually apologized for citing it incorrectly, so that was cool. Um, and I think that's it, yeah.
Um, it, I've been mulling this about in my brain and I don't know if it's a good idea or not, so I'll throw it out to you guys. Um, I was really, you did the right thing. This is not a criticism of you. I'm glad that you stopped him, but I did want to hear more from Dave tonight during that thing. And and I don't know if there's any way in the process, besides Dave just submitting his comments in writing before the meeting.
Or passing his sheet of paper to somebody else.
Yeah, I. Um, because most comments are, uh, I'm going to say this because I think it's going to stop the project. I just want to keep my views or I'm just reiterating the same thing that forty other people said, but Dave was bringing some, some stuff that, you know, may or may not have been anything, but it was something new and I, Dave does dig. Sometimes he 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 brings. I know, I know.
History that could have been nothing and then he had.
But I think that did also like, hey, I've been here and I've seen a lot of stuff and this is some stuff that you may not be hearing. So I I just don't know if there's any way to in 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 a process, I guess written comment is the way.
That's the.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, is there like, could we almost like have a process where we say, I would like to hear more from him, but I, then that isn't fair to the other.
No, that's.
And the challenge is knowing Dave, it would be.
Oh, it 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 could have been ten, fifteen minutes. Yeah, I I could have regretted after too many.
But yeah, but then it's. Like it, encouraging, please submit that as a written comment. Like, I don't, I.
Question for the whole thing is like, hey, if your three minutes are up and you still have more to say, I encourage you to submit a written.
Cause then he could still, yeah, he could still submit that information. Yeah.
Not gonna mean anything to uh, for us, but the, to.
But I'm saying we're making a decision.
Right, that night.
That night, so if you're submitting it, you're submitting it after, so.
Yeah, that's not gonna help.
Well, that's unfortunately, it's part of, he knows he has three minutes.
Exactly.
I I wanted to hear more too, but he 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 knew he had three minutes.
But at the same time, we did get this today.
Yeah.
So he could have did that.
Yeah, there's. It's an, it's an unfortunate one, but.
As we heard at planning and zoning, so you know, there was, he and he does know the process, I, yeah.
He knows the process better than most of them sitting.
But you're right, though. It was frustrating because there was some information there that we.
I could tell he was going down something I wanted to know.
Yeah, I wanted to hear him talk about.
Nobody else mentioned the.
I mean, that's where that was going, was the.
I'm excited about AD, so I wanted to hear what his.
All right, Ken, so that was.
That was, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I haven't had a a meeting with uh, my other boards, so.
Um, Shannon already talked about the one thing I was talking about tourism, did approve thousand dollar budget for the winter thing in the Mulberry Plaza.
Um, I have a couple of things. I'm sorry, I'll try to be fast. Uh, has anyone else heard about all sorts of difficulties? I'm mainly asking staff with the internet um, broadband being laid down, the sidewalks being torn up and not replaced and sewer lines getting wrecked and.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, um, it's a constant effort, so I I want to applaud Kimberly um, who is staying on them on a regular basis. Um, and we've had, we've had some meetings and we had to follow up with a pretty harsh uh, uh, written uh, uh, dialogue yesterday because uh, we keep resetting with them for plans and we, so we've, we've basically said if they don't get it straight, because they promised realignment of the notice they're supposed to do with their permit, that we're going to pull permits if they don't get it on track. Now, the hitting things is the nature of our valley and the nature of the fact that all the providers, um, when they do their locates, still don't always know where their stuff is, so. Um, uh, it happens. Um, uh, and uh, you know, we we want to see that limited as much as possible. Um, but it's not, I again, I just want to stress, it's not because a locate wasn't uh, done, it's not because anything like that. Um, but we have been, uh, the yards not getting back, um, every time those complaints. The, I will say, the fiber company is quick to uh, strive to respond and get their uh, their subcontractor to go repair. Um, sometimes it's not quick enough. There's people that are wondering and then that drags on. Um, we've had, I Kimberly and I, Kimberly and I together have sat down with them a couple of times in person and just, you know, after they've, they've said they have a corrected plan, so it won't happen again. I mean, then they were in my neighborhood and I didn't get notice and they messed my yard up. I mean, like, I I mean, uh, you know, and uh, so there's no favor, you know, no favoritism going on and the, um, and uh.
Yeah, they've hit, they've.
Um, Brandon Estates, because they.
Again, though, that was not, that that actually was not their liability. That was.
Yeah.
A faulty locate.
Well, yeah, but they they should shut down that road horribly and didn't, did not, I don't think they, I'm not a pro at signage for roads, but they did a piss poor job at that and the, because the detour was horrendous. And and the thing is, is you had to go down the middle of the road, like you had to go all the way to Brandon Estates and then backtrack and go all the way around. It was just, and they said they would be there for an hour and they were for like five or six.
Yeah. Anyway, anyway, short is yes, we're addressing it and we're taking stronger steps as we go.
And is there any verbiage that we should be using if anyone says anything to us about it?
I think, I think they need to.
That's official.
I think if they're.
It was just, it was, they did a horrible job managing that.
Deb, you got that on the record, right?
So if they're, if anybody talk, if anybody comes to you
Yeah.
and they're not getting a response, they really, we're not trying to get them to come to us first. We're, they they're supposed to go first to deeply digital, you know, um, if they're, if that's not working, then they need to call Public Works and then we, we make sure it's happened.
Okay.
Um, for the most part, when people are talking with them, they are getting people back out and and doing that and they're striving to do that. These are their future customers, hopefully, so yeah, yeah, it's, um, but we, we are not, when we get the call, we are then following up with, we're we're not like saying, no, you gotta call that.
Is it worthwhile to have TRR do something, communicate via Facebook?
Um.
Or is that?
That's.
Disparaging.
That's, yeah, that's not the route we're looking to go. What we're doing is making sure, we're trying to hold them accountable for them to get the notice on the doors before they're in the neighborhood and.
Some of, yeah.
And that's the requirement.
Communicate.
Um, what's happened is they've basically finished in Palisade and now they're sending all crews here, so we're starting to see more and more. So there's more. Um, I will, and this, this is, this is not an excuse for us not to continue putting the effort, but this is what happens everywhere in the country when they do it. It's, 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 it's constant.
Do we, is, because can, we talked a little bit about it on street repair, so people are seeing that where they've uh, either potholed.
Yeah.
Or they, you know, had to dig up the street where it looks like they came back and patched it and feel like this is not a patch, but it's a temporary.
Yeah, or you got the, like the steel plate for too long and the, um, we're having trouble with Spectrum where they have a line across, you you had one near you, I mean, across that arches forever, right? And there's one on Pine right now, so all those we're trying to, we're addressing with the. So all those we're trying to, we're addressing with the, with the various providers, but we're also looking into a way of like temporary encroachment permits. That have a little more teeth in it that we're not doing right now and some other things of, you know, whether, when they need new permits and like timelines of having to get things. Back, um, so that's a little bit different than the. Then then some of the things we're running into fiber, although some of the fiber is causing some of that too, so. But that's, that's the other thing on our list that we're working on right now because. We're getting a little frustrated with how long it, the, the temporary fixes are hanging around if you, you know. So we're, we're actually looking into some, a a few different ways of handling that, both through permitting. And through timelines where where if they don't do it within a certain period of time, we create it where we do it. Um, or have it done and charge it back to them, so we're. We haven't, we haven't created those or we haven't gotten as far as that, but we're looking at the different alternatives for it because. It's starting to happen more and last longer than than it usually does, like the the road repairs and. Um, like right now, we're working with Excel on some that have, uh, or or U Water, that that it's taken. A lot longer than it needed to be and anyway.
What I'm hearing is they called clearly digital or deeply digital and then if they don't get a response, then they call the city, Public Works.
Um, I also wanted to say I love the striped poles, the decor, the holiday decorations. Makes me so happy, so thank you to.
Those, those, that's, those look great.
Whoever came up with that. Christine, um, and then several of us went to the District Fifty-One State of the District luncheon yesterday. And that was, the the student participation was fantastic. It was really amazing and it was great to. Be part of that. State of the District is slightly grim and so if you want to hear more about that, you can. Go look at all of them, the district statistics right now, but it's not super.
I, they couldn't do it without all their partnerships.
Exactly, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Financial aspect.
Financial aspect, the lack of, you know, the enrollment decreasing, how that affects all, all of the other. Aspects of academically good.
Yeah, the glimpse would be where the the Colorado's thirtieth is how they fund per pupil. Of all the states, so we're, we're that far down, like number one would be the best, then we're thirtieth.
Thirty-fifth.
Thirty-fifth, okay. And then, and then within, then within Colorado, our school district is like the fifth from the bottom. Bottom of funding.
Gets allocated.
But that is, but that is not because the state funds us differently, it's because we haven't added more funding by local measures.
That was, and Dr. Hill is a very positive human, that was hard to, that was really hard, it was, there was no good. Positive spin on most of them, so you did a good job in these. That's all.
Um, yeah, deeply digital, I did appreciate them spray painting our decorative rocks and our plants. Uh, that was very kind of them. I've since rearranged the rocks to break up the pattern and now there's a gas and a water line apparently heading towards the house. Probably gonna screw them up. Uh, I did not have a G-Jet meeting, um, but did have the Fruta Chamber Board annual retreat. Uh, once again, a lot of discussion about coming up with plans about festivals and how to move forward with that. And they, it was a commitment to have a plan in place by this time next year, so there can be further discussions. With us among others, uh, also. A greater recognition, recognition that they need to be the voice of business and part of that is communicating that voice to us. That's kind of the highlights. Good, all right, let's move into our next one, is it an executive session? So we need a motion.
Just reading this back page.
Make a motion to movement to, to convene an executive session pursuant to Colorado Rights Statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. For determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, helping strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators. In pursuit to Colorado Rights Statute second, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A for the possible sale or lease thereof. With regard to the redevelopment of one sixty-nine North Mulberry Street. Got a first and a second, I don't hear any other comments. Please call council.
Council Hansy? Council Bremen? Council Purser?
Yes.
Council Cry? Council Miller? Some passes six zero. Oh, no.